Oh, man.
Hello.
It's such a buildup.
Hi, Chris.
Okay, I think we're on now. Okay. I'm gonna call or order the November 27th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. This is a makeup meeting from November the 15th, which was rescheduled due to inclement weather. I'm gonna ask Mr. Crowley, please lead us in pledge.
A pledge, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could I please ask for a moment of silence for us serving our country, both at home and abroad, and those folks in California, too? You think about a whole town being wiped out. That could happen to any one of us, so our hearts go out to them as well. First up on tonight's agenda is announcements. Ms. Prescott, tour.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, officials, all the supervisors, and all our folks attending the meeting tonight. I have some announcements to make on behalf of Parks and Rec. Don't miss out on craft programs with Ms. Kathy. Kids' one-day workshop for ages three to six, once a month, on Tuesdays, December 11th, January 8th, February 12th, from 4:30 to 6:00. Fees, $12 a class. Munchkin time for preschoolers ages two and three with an adult helper, once a month on Wednesdays, December 12th, January 9th, February 13th, from 10 to 11, $9 a class. Think about discount tickets for holiday gifts. Regal movie tickets, ski lift tickets, flower show. They also have the zoo, Camden Aquarium, Crayola, and other local attraction tickets, some of which don't expire until 2019, on sale until December 22nd. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Parks and Rec office at Warminster Community Park. Or you can check online for tickets prices or call the office. 2019 dog licenses will be available for sale the first week of December. Sign up for Protect Yourself From Scams workshop. It's being hosted by the Bucks County Office of Consumer Protection on Monday, December 10th, at 6:30 at the rec. Program is free, but you must pre-register. Tickets for wine and cheese designer Bag Bingo will go on sale December 1st, township website and the Park and Rec office. Event will be held on Friday, February 22nd, 2019, at the Wilson Senior Center. Tickets are $40 a person, include wine, beer, hors d'oeuvres, buffet. Don't miss out on this fun evening. Join us, the Friends of Warminster Parks Casino Night, on Saturday, March 23rd, 2019, at Ann's Choice. We'll continue to sell tickets and accept sponsorships throughout the next four months. The $35 tickets will include beef and beer, $50 in chips, gaming table raffles, and silent auction items. Some of the items are Alaskan cruise, safari in Africa, and more. For more information on any of these items, please contact the Park and Rec office at (215) 443-5428, or visit the website. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Thank you. Mr. Monroe.
None this evening.
Thank you. Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to mention that Phyllis Meckle passed away last week. Phyllis was a long, long-time Warminster resident. She served on the Water and Municipal Authority, and her and her husband Jack were instrumental in starting the Warminster Pioneers. So our hearts and prayers go out to the Meckle family for this. Thank you.
So, yeah. Okay, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to quickly welcome new businesses to town. We would like to welcome Open World Incorporated, which is a large-scale family event planning firm at 165 Veterans Way. Provident Marketing, they do off-premises packaging and warehouse storage at 200 Park Avenue. General Insurance Agency, they do insurance, at 250 West Street Road. Ms. Spa Nails, at 261 County Line Road. Sapling Incorporated, which is a maker of synchronized clock systems. They recently relocated their headquarters from Huntington Valley to Warminster over at 670 Lewis Drive. So we welcome them. And also open just recently is Home Two Suites, over at 230 Veterans Way. We welcome all these businesses to town. Thank them for choosing to call Warminster home and wish them all the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I just have a couple of quick announcements, and we have a really long agenda tonight, so we're gonna try and keep things moving along. I want to congratulate the recent winners of the November election, and we would certainly invite them to a future meeting if they'd like to address the public via our airwaves would be perfectly fine. And the only other announcement is there was an executive session prior to tonight's meeting where we discussed personnel matters, union negotiations, and litigation. So with that, I'm gonna move on. We have three presentations tonight. I'd like to do all three and then take a recess so we can take some pictures, if that's okay with the folks involved. So the first one I'm gonna ask to come up is the Willowdale Principle, Kathryn Perkins. This is the recognition of the paint the plow. How do I turn it on, Ben? Yeah, Kathryn, bring everyone up, please. As everyone can see when they came in tonight, the plows are out front for demonstration for anyone who wants to take a look, maybe get a picture, whatever. This is the second year that we're doing this, and it's a program where we invite these talented kids to paint our plows, obviously, before we send them out for snow removal. And this is this year's winner. So I'm gonna hand it over to you to introduce the winners and whoever would like to say a few words. And by the way, welcome back to Willowdale, too.
Thank you. I just want to first thank Eric Hines, because I did give him quite a few phone calls and emails to ask him some questions, because we were a little hesitant about actually doing the plow project. But we so, you know, spoke to our awesome art teacher, who is so talented, and her helper, Ms. Starr, and Ms. Dow, who's our art teacher, and these wonderful students who work so hard in the early morning hours to get that plow completed so quickly. So we're very appreciative. We were kind of shocked that we won, but we're very appreciative that we did. So I'll have the students introduce themselves, if that's okay.
Great. Tell us what grade you're in, too.
I'm Logan Ward, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Tyler Everly, and I'm in fifth.
I'm Harry Banks, and I'm in fifth.
I'm Luke Taylor, and I'm in fourth.
I'm Mackenzie Schiffer, and I'm in fifth.
Well, you guys certainly did a terrific job. We have a plaque that stays up here in the township building that your name has been added to. Willowdale 2018 winner. And we also have a check here from the township for the art department, which is what the winner gets every year. What's that check for, anyway? Five hundred. There you go. That's a good haul. Excellent. Let's give these guys a hand. Thank you. And we'll take a recess so we can get some pictures. If you guys would like to stick around, would be great. Kathryn, it's really good to see you, too.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Kathryn.
Good job, guys.
Okay, next up, I'm gonna ask our friend Joe Cowie from ShopRite. And I have to ask, is anyone here from NasTech tonight? I don't think they are. I have a plaque for them as well, so we can send that over to their offices. But I know our friend Joe Cowie's here. I'd like to ask Joe to come up. And Will Morrison, would you please come with him, too, Will? For those of you that don't know, Joe Cowie is the owner-operator of our local ShopRite, and in my opinion, the most generous businessman in Warminster. Can't do enough for local organizations, and especially our police department. People don't know that when our officers are on duty at a holiday, when they can't be home, Joe sends dinner over for them. Which people, like, the little things that he does for our police that people don't even know is, I can't say enough. I thank you every time I'm in your store, and I'm a proud shopper of your store as well. This is a certificate of appreciation to the Cowie family ShopRite of Warminster. Joe had a fundraising effort, which is allowing us to purchase two new canines for our canine patrol. And the officers here tonight will be handling the canines. And Joe has also brought Will Morrison, who we'll introduce with him, who was instrumental in this fundraising. Will stood at the front of that store selling Warminster Police T-shirts. I hope everyone has. Do you have still, do you have more? People want one? We might have some more, less, more laying around if somebody wants one. But I'm gonna give it to you, Joe, to introduce. And this is for you.
Thank you.
For the store. And Will, I have a few things for you as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I'm a local business guy, so, you know, it's real important to me to just keep doing what I do in the community, because that's why we're successful with ShopRite, is because of the people in this community. And we wouldn't be successful if it wasn't for you. So we're just gonna keep doing what we're doing and keep giving back and making sure that the community is where it needs to be. You guys have what you need, and we keep doing business, and it's real important to me. Will was my first intern that ever joined the company. And he wanted to come, and he wanted to be part of an internship program in his store to get leadership. And he, his mom, had contacted me and said, you know, I think, you know, if you could try to help him, okay, it'd be good. This kid showed up every Sunday morning, and only you would know, because you're...
I'm a Sunday shopper.
He's a Sunday shopper.
It's a big party for me, though, Joe. I hang out for a bit.
And Will shows up every, Will shows up every Sunday morning during a period of time of his internship, okay, as a teenager, who also worked at Doylestown Country Club. He cut lawns, came to my store to do his internship program, ran cross-country, and you know what? Just a great example of our younger generation, and also a great example of taking a leadership role and standing on the front end, which is not an easy thing for a 16-year-old kid to do, 17-year-old kid to do, stand there and asking people to donate for a canine dog for the township. I appreciate what you do. I appreciate you're doing an internship with me, and you are definitely, you are definitely something that got my attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And Will, I have, thank you. And Will, you're learning from the best, because Joe is the best at the craft that he practices, no doubt about it. I have a couple of letters for you from myself and from Judge Fennello, who couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to send his regards as well. So I know you have your parents and your grandparents here, which I think is great. So let me get through our next presentation, and we'll take a recess and get some pictures. But hopefully, we'll see that hanging in the ShopRite.
You sure will.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Thank you again. I'm sure we'll be seeing you again. And Will, I hope we see you again. I do. Okay, the next up is the presentation for the EAC. I have a proclamation here, which is declaring 2018 the Year of the Bird. So I'm gonna ask our members of the EAC to come up. I think, did I see the chairman come in as well? Amy, Shelley, and I saw the former chairman. You're not the chairman anymore. Who's the chairman now?
Uh, I don't remember.
Oh, I, oh, you are the chairman now. Okay. See how much I know. A lot of balls in the air. Amy, how are you?
How are you?
How are you? Ken, how are you? I have a proclamation to read here, which, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. We, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township Bucks County, are pleased to recognize 2018 of the Year of the Bird. Birds symbolize nature's interconnectedness and the importance of caring for our shared planet. Birds are important for pollination, pest control, rodent control, seed propagation, weed control, nutrient recycling. Beauty and bird watching is beneficial to mental health. Each spring and fall, hundreds of thousands of migratory songbirds fly through Warminster Township, stopping to rest, refuel, in and around Kemper Park and our 240-acre Warminster Community Park, and are counted by local bird watchers. Over 115 species of birds are recorded in Warminster Township, and many of these migrate through our residents or are residents of the township, which they use for food and shelter. Six species of bird that are listed in the Conservation Network as birds of concern in need of conservation, also identified by Audubon's Birds and Climate Report as climate threatened or recorded in the Warminster Township, including wood thrush, Canada wobbler, willow, flycatcher, Louisiana water thrush, black-throated blue wobbler, and blue-winged warbler. I wonder if I have a couple of them in my yard. Depends on what time of night it is. Burning activities, said the economy of beginning people in the Warminster Township, demonstrating that birds thrive and prosper here. Whereas climate change is the number-one threat to birds, and whereas the 2018 Centennial Year of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, which protects birds in our backyards, like the wood thrush and eastern throb. Therefore, now be resolved on the 27th day of November, 2018, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors, by virtue of the authority vested therein, do hereby proclaim 2018 the Bird and urge, the Bird, Year of the Bird, and urge all citizens to take due note of this observance. That was a lot. But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to you, Ken, if you want to comment on this, because I, I know Karen Whitney's here. I know when you walk the path in our Warminster Community Park, there's, there's a lot of places to stop and read about the local birds and that out there.
Well, thanks, Mark. And that is quite a mouthful there. But, yeah, we've been, we've been actively trying to get participation from the community, and we've been recognized by Audubon. They've come to our meetings. We certainly encourage everyone in the community to help the plight of songbirds. I mean, you see them in your backyard, you see them at the park. I'll let Karen speak to the, to the bird count that's coming up, and the EAC is going to try to sponsor that as well. But, yeah, we appreciate it. It all starts in the community, and it's a great, great honor. Thank you.
And I have to tell you, Ken, I religiously fill my bird feeders, and my wife will tell you, and I always say it, or even if it's eight o'clock at night, I gotta fill the bird feeders, or I'm gonna put a picket line up out front. I say it twice a week, there'll be a picket line up out front tonight if I don't. But anyway, hey, thanks, guys. This is great. That's for you to take. And I'm gonna ask for a brief recess, and we can take some pictures with the groups that are here, and we'll get back to our meeting. But thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna resume, we're gonna resume tonight's meeting. And item three on tonight's agenda, land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. Item A, 2018-10, waiver land development, Falcon Circle, The Fuge. Mr. Inozzi, by the way, Mr. Inozzi is here for Mr. Bartle tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see councils here this evening, so if you want to come up and get situated, and as you do, I'll just give the high points of the, of the application. Here this evening, applicant is seeking a land development waiver to permit the reconfiguration of several paved areas on the property. The property is approximately 3.69 acres. It's located at 780 Falcon Circle, within the township's IO Industrial Office District. The purpose of the reconfiguration is to provide a total of 156 on-site parking spaces. Porous pavers are being proposed for portions of those, of approximately 104 parking spaces to address stormwater management. Additional improvements include the removal of several paved and gravel areas, removal of a canopy from the powerhouse building on the property, and associated landscaping and lighting. A resolution has been prepared for the board's consideration. This was in your packet. It's a conditional approval of land development waiver, subject to applicant satisfying certain terms, one of which is complying with the review letters. The second is signing a security agreement to our office's satisfaction, posting the associated financial security, complying with applicable zoning and conditional use relief, satisfying all other township codes, obtaining necessary permits, and paying project-related costs. I believe applicant's counsel has reviewed the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, and...
It is. Yes.
Okay. And applicant has signed or is prepared to sign the resolution as presented on the, if the board grants it?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So that is essentially, in a nutshell, what the conditional waiver is before this board for your consideration, and I'll turn it over to counsel if she wants to add anything.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Carrie Naismith. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild. Here, on behalf of the applicant, Cervero Turnkey Solutions. Also with me here this evening is Mr. Cervero, as well as Rob Cunningham, who's the engineer on the project. I know you have a long agenda this evening, so I'll keep it short. But there are several applications that are currently pending before the township. If you'd like, I can give you just a quick overview and explain the project and what's being proposed on the site currently. So right now, the property is known as The Fuge. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. It's used for both office uses as well as a banquet facility. And the banquet facility is not, is not a permitted use on the site, so we did have to go to the zoning hearing board and received a variance for this use. Previously, a few years ago, you may recall, we were before this board and received conditional use approval for a shared parking arrangement. So the thought behind that was, since there are several uses, both office uses that are used during the day, and then the banquet facility is used on the evening or on the weekends, that those two uses could share those parking spaces, rather than having to provide all of the on-site parking. Subsequent to that, the applicant did go to the zoning hearing board back in July and obtained a variance to expand the banquet facility by an additional 4,000 square feet on the third floor of the building. As part of that decision from the zoning hearing board, they did have a few concerns regarding parking and asked that the applicant make certain improvements to the property. One, to provide a fire lane, provide some additional ADA-accessible parking spaces. And as a result of that, we reduced the on-site parking from 87 spaces down to 44. One of the conditions of the zoning hearing board decision was that we come back to the board and amend the conditional use approval to address the shared parking arrangement, because the number that's being shared has now changed from 87 down to the 43. In addition, because the, we don't have all of the required parking on-site, we also are proposing to have off-site parking as well. So we do have a conditional use application that is pending before the board. We did have a hearing, unfortunately, due to inclement weather a few weeks ago. It's been... been continued to December. But, that application is, again, to allow, to satisfy the conditions of the current zoning hearing board to ask for shared parking arrangement as well as some off-site parking. But, in addition to that, what we decided to do, what the applicant is proposing to do, is to address all of the parking concerns, and what is before you this evening, is proposing to reconfigure the parking area onsite now and construct all of the required 150 parking spaces onsite. Actually, what's being proposed is 156 parking spaces. That way, we can, you know, eventually eliminate the need for the shared parking arrangement as a condition of the grant of the variance for the banquet facility, they also imposed a condition that there be no daytime events. And, we would like to be allowed to have daytime events, and we believe that, or asking, I should say, to have that condition removed if we can show that we can provide the required number of parking spaces onsite. So, again, this evening, we're here requesting a waiver of land development, proposing to construct 156 parking spaces on the property, as well as landscaping and some additional stormwater management facilities. And then, we'll be back in, in front of you in, next month, on the conditional use. The thought being that we need the conditional use now, so that we can proceed while we move forward with the, the parking that's shown on this plan and it being constructed.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
I just, I just have comments, I, I know that the staff has worked tirelessly with you and your engineer to, to kind of put this all in place, and that's why the waiver's being recommended by the staff, so.
Yes, thank you.
Kudos, I mean, I know you guys jumped through a lot of hoops to try to, to get this right, so.
Thank you. And thank you to your staff for, they've been very helpful in trying to resolve these issues.
Well, that being said, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Just clarification on no daytime events. What, what exactly is that? So, you, it's, you, you mentioned something about the request of no daytime events?
Well, right now, so, when we received the variance for, to use the property for a banquet facility, one of the conditions in granting that variance was that the banquet facility only be used in the evening and on the weekends.
Okay.
And we believe that that, a condition was imposed because of the shared parking arrangement.
Sure.
So, now, by providing all of the on, the required number, 150 spaces, we're, we are requesting that the zoning hearing board strike that condition, so that we can have daytime events.
I, well, I would agree, yeah, I think you should be able to have daytime events, absolutely, yeah, okay, yeah.
Currently, we are not.
We're gonna work on that, um, alright.
Anybody else?
Anyone have anything?
No.
Alright, is there any comment from the public before the board takes action? I'd say none, I'm gonna call it and call up their motion.
Motion?
Ms. Frescatore, second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further comment? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll see you in December, and, and, thanks for working through that with the staff.
Thank you very much.
I know it was a lot of work on both ends to get it, to get it right, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is item B, 2018-12 waiver land development for Gildas Club. Mr. Iainozie?
Greg, we'll wait there, we can see. And sir, if you could identify yourself for the board?
Ken Farabee, and I'm here on behalf of the Cancer Support Group Community and Gildas Club for the application before the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farabee. Again, before the board, is a resolution for a land development waiver to allow the applicant to construct a 1,183 square foot addition to an existing accessory community building on the two acre property that's located at 200 Kirk Road, within the township's GOV, which is the government public district. The property is a historic property, is labeled by the Wormminster Township Zoning District map. The property will continue to be utilized as a multipurpose community center room, which is a use number 16. It also has components that are for storage and open space, and access to the property will be from the existing Kirk Road Drive. Again, land development waiver approval will be conditioned upon compliance with several terms, including compliance with the review letters that were attached to the draft resolution and put in your packets over the weekend, signing the requisite land development waiver documentation, posting the appropriate financial security to the township engineer's satisfaction, satisfying all applicable township code provisions, obtaining all applicable permits, and paying all project-related costs and fees when due and owing. Attended to this proposal, applicant is seeking a waiver of a specific land development ordinance provision, which is for the minimum requirement for streets. The waiver is being sought because there, along the Kirk Road frontage, because there is no other sidewalk along that frontage, as well as given the nature of the project, which is rather straightforward and simple. So, that is the, the proposed resolution that we've prepared for the board's consideration. And applicant, do you have any further questions or?
Sir, I've been asked that you move the microphone a little closer to-
A little better?
Yeah, alright Ed?
Normally, my voice is loud enough without the microphone, so.
Thank you.
As the solicitor spoke, we are planning to add an 1,183, 83 square foot addition onto the rear of the Noogie Land Building on Gildas Club. And, basically, the, the need for this is, the cancer support community needs more of an open space in which to accommodate guest speakers when they come from the University of Penn, Fox Chase, or wherever to discuss programs. And they also need more of an open room to accommodate, you know, movies and the kids' summer program. And, basically, the addition is, is to better serve the existing programs with regard to Gildas Club and the cancer support community. With regard to any engineering, Rob Cunningham's here from Holmes and Cunningham, who, thank you, donated his services.
And while you're, while you're at that, I understand-
And I would also like to say thank you to the township's professional staff for where they-
All of our staff has done this pro bono.
That's right, donating their services, it's greatly appreciated.
And Matt Pietrowski, and Matt Pietrowski has been involved as well.
Right. And last but not least, we'll be made, so.
Yes.
But, uh, thank you very much, it's greatly appreciated, because our budget is extremely tight. And as the solicitor spoke, all the letters with regard to the Gilmore, the zoning letter are all, will comply on our, our part, and with regard to the Boucher and James letter is a will comply, other than 3B with a request for a waiver on sidewalks curbing and road lighting.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
Any comments from the board or questions?
Just one little comment, I, I, Gildas Place is phenomenal, I mean, it has all the history with the Underground Railroad right there, and they're a big part of the community, and I, I think this is, this is great for, for them, so.
It really is, yeah.
And I, I thank, again, all of our professional staff, including you, for, for doing a pro bono, because they deserve it. Thank you.
They do, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments, questions? Anyone from the public want to weigh in before we take some action? Hey, well, I want to say thank you as well, as a cancer survivor, I fully understand what you, what you do over there, believe me.
Well, we've all been affected, I understand, yeah, we've all been affected by it, so.
Yes, yeah, so, it's really nice work you're doing over there, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this helps you fulfill your mission. So, with that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Iainozie, will you prepare a motion, please?
Up for consideration is resolution number 2018-41, the resolution is, is as presented, printed apart by me earlier. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion.
Mr. Monroe?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore, any further comment from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries? Okay. Next up is item C, consider authorization of advertisement for retirement community zoning overlay ordinance. Mr. Iainozie?
Yes. This was also included in your packets, this is a zoning ordinance that seeks to amend the zoning ordinance by adding a new overlay district, the overlay is entitled the RC Retirement Overlay. The purpose of this overlay, or it, it's being proposed in contemplation of the township's aging population, it, it supplements the underlying zoning district by allowing properties within the overlay to be developed to provide the agent, other options for their living arrangements. Mechanically, this ordinance, again, creates the overlay, adds the overlay to your zoning district, of, excuse me, classes of districts in your code, as well as amends the zoning map to reflect the overlay, and that overlay is being applied to two parcels within the township. Excuse me, three parcels within the township. And so, this is beginning the review process, alls we're seeking this evening is to advertise this for a hearing, I believe the advertisement will be for January 17th, so we would get that advertised, and then that begins the review from your county planning commission, your township planning commission, and your consultants. And then it would culminate with a hearing before your board.
And, and I believe, once we take action tonight, if the board's so inclined to take action to advertise, the next step will be to go to our local planning commission, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
September 11th.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but this is a direct result of Catus coming before you, and the board giving consensus to move forward through the process, so this is the next step in that process, but, I'll make it clear that this is for Catus and what they're proposing.
And this is going to be a long process, they're gonna go to our-
Yes.
-planning commission, to the county-
County.
-planning commission, back to us for a hearing, then, land development.
Correct.
If, if you approve the ordinance, then yes, and land development would follow.
So, that's the, the 9/11-
9/11 York Road, yes.
Um, because I know that there was, you know, a large building and so on and so forth, so this would basically guarantee that it would have to be offset back from the frontage of, of York Road, correct?
Yeah, they might have-
If, if we eventually went up that plant line.
Yeah, they did make a change that, we've had several staff meetings, a lot of work on both ends, again, with the staff, and one of the changes was pushing that back, I believe, to 100 feet, yeah. So, they doubled it.
But, this was, this was 600, right? Didn't I see that somewhere?
No.
100-foot setback, except for the overhang, which is, I think, 50-foot setback, if memory serves.
It's the 600-foot of frontage.
Ah, okay.
We saw 600, and we saw street, but-
Thank you, you read my mind, appreciate it.
I knew where you found it.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
I'm sorry.
And this is all, there's a, we'll go over, again, through land development as well.
Absolutely.
This just starts the process.
This just starts the process.
Yeah, we've, again, we worked on just the ordinance, getting staff comments back and forth, based on some feedback we already had from the board and planning commission, just informally.
And that was one of the big part of the feedback, was the setback, right, which we went over to the staff over, and over and over.
And once adopted, this is a, this is the application of a supplemental overlay, the property's not being rezoned, so that's just a supplement.
Okay, sir, do you want to have it, is there any more discussion from the board before we craft a motion? Is there any from the public? We'll have another opportunity while we're taking action, if there's anyone-
Yeah, I just jumped there, I, I would just request a motion to authorize my office to advertise this ordinance two consecutive weeks in accord with the MPC for a hearing on January 17th.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some.
Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion?
No.
Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob.
Sir.
Okay, next up is, consider authorization of advertisement of ordinance approving amendment to the water, to the Wormminster Municipal Authority Charter. Greg, would you like to cover that?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board recalls, we've had several discussions about the possibility of the municipal authority taking over stormwater for the township. We've been having lots of meetings over that, back and forth, the professionals have been talking. This is the first step in that process. What we're envisioning right now is a series of events, the first being a change to the charter of the municipal authority, and this is a very minor change, it just allows them to do stormwater, and we would be doing that by ordinance, so you'd advertise this ordinance, and you would be adopting it at your next meeting. Concurrently, at the next meeting, Mr. Hagie will be here giving a presentation, as well, he'll be giving his annual update on the municipal authority, but also a presentation on stormwater, be able to answer hopefully some of your questions. I know that there was questions in the past about potential fee structures, he's gonna be able to go over some of the information that they have, and then some of their, their thinking, so you can have that information. After that would be the changing of another ordinance, another township ordinance, which establishes the authority and give them the right to have, to conduct stormwater on our behalf. And lastly, would be an agreement between the township and the authority specifying duties, who does what, and what the, you know, lines of demarcation are. So, but this is the first step in that process, is to make that charter change with the authority.
So, I, I'll kick off the discussion. This, I'll go back with stormwater with, with, as far as my involvement anyway, since 2012, we had major stormwater issues in the township, which have been addressed. The Whittier Basin, those people's houses aren't flooding out anymore because that basin was rebuilt. Eighth and Green, cars aren't floating through the intersection in rain such as yesterday's anymore. And that was done by our guys from Public Works, did a tremendous job, that was a million-dollar job that we did for $250,000. We get the Centennial Road Basin, regional basin done at zero cost to the taxpayers, because it was done by a public-private with a builder, a developer, builder, developer, and stabilization along the stream banks, we actually saved someone's home. Well, where we're at now is, the, the major stormwater work around the township is, is basically private property stuff. There's issues that pop up here or there, that we do the maintenance on. The reason that we wanted charge to the MUA with going forward with this, is we had to adopt a year ago an MS4 plan, which is an unfunded mandate by the federal government. It requires three stormwater regional basins to be installed in this township in the next four years now, it was five years, we're four years now, at a cost of $4 million. We feel, I feel anyway, and the board's gonna vote on this, that the municipal authority is better equipped to carry out the MS4 plan. Their board, their, their professionals, we just, no offense, Greg, but, we just feel that they're better equipped to carry out and implement the MS4 plan. I don't like it, it's an unfunded mandate, is there probably gonna be a stormwater fee on your water bill? Maybe. But, it's, this is an unfunded mandate that has to be done, the, the government is forcing us to do this. Not forcing us to charge the MUA with doing it, but we feel the best way forward is for the MUA to perform this. Oh, that's, that's my comments on it, if anyone has any more before we take note of action, advertise.
And I just had one thing, just for clarification, there was discussion years ago about creating a stormwater authority.
Right.
And municipalities have done that, you have a unique situation where you have your own, basically your own authority that you, you don't share with other municipalities, which joint, and everybody wants to do something different, or the cost, you know, small municipality versus a large, so, that was been kicked around for, for years about creating the authority, and then it kind of recently evolved into, with Greg's direction, into just having the WMA, they're already set up to do it, so.
They're equipped to do it, correct. And we, I think we took action to adopt the MS4 plan a year ago in August, so we, we've already lost a year in getting forward.
You are behind on part of the implementation.
And, and the question has been, how are we gonna pay for this? I mean, it's, it's probably a $4 million job that has to be done. I, I don't like it a bit.
I think you did a really great explanation of the whole situation, Mark.
But, you know, it was, stormwater was a huge issue facing this township in the past 10 years, and I feel that this board and administration, our Public Works people have done a tremendous job addressing it. By the way, I just saw today, one more tenth of water in November, and it's the wettest November in history, and I think we're very close to the wettest year in history. So, I know a lot of people's yards are flooding out, mine is too, that's some of what's going on recently.
And, and, correct, I'm wrong, but I mean, we have to show our appreciation to the water authority, because, I mean, it was their willingness to be able to take this on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, it's, I mean, I, I think, I think a thanks goes out to you guys, Tim and your people.
And that's the reason, because it came up this weekend, I saw online, the reason why our stormwater line item in next year's budget is zero, is because we're anticipating the transfer of those costs-
Correct.
-to the, to the authority, okay.
Right.
Those are the soft costs that you've been incurring-
Right.
-on top of it, so, it's not just the infrastructure costs, it's, there's a lot of legwork, a lot of design, a lot of permitting that goes into that.
And the MUA will be a municipal authority slash stormwater authority.
Yes.
Basically, when, whenever.
And we've had numerous staff meetings, very early on, their engineer, Joe, Noel and I from CCAST, we've worked with each other for years, we didn't want any overlap with two engineers getting involved in land development projects, so, at the direction of Greg, and even, I know Mark and I discussed this, we, we did not want to have duplicate reviews, or, or, you know, just a lot of wasted time with too many people involved, so, I will be, Gilmore will still be involved as your engineer for land development, we will make sure we enforce any regulations or any future requirements they have, we will make sure they enforce that, just like we do with planning for sewage, we work hand in hand with planning modules and land development, but then, any type of infrastructure improvements, any type of resident complaints, anything related to your existing facilities, that will then go to that engineer and- anything related to your existing facilities, that will then go to that engineer and obviously to the WMA. I'm sure some of that'll still come to the township, but that'll be on a staff level, and we will not be involved.
I'm gonna send it right over to you, Mr. Hagie.
He's waiting for those calls. We will not be involved in any of that unless their engineer or Mr. Hagie needs our assistance with something we worked on in the past.
And I wanna make one comment, too, that's not directly related, but since we're on the water authority. So, I got a phone call today about the blood results that were coming out. I guess there were some things that were written. So, someone who read it, I had not read it myself, but somebody that read it called me because they felt confused, because it wasn't clear as to where we're getting our water. So, I just wanna reiterate that our water is coming from North Wales. And, Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's coming from North Wales. So, we're drinking non-detect water. We're not drinking PFO, PFOS. So, like I said, I got a call from somebody that I don't typically get a call, that was confused on that issue.
Tim, if you wanted to address that, there's not a motion on the floor yet. If you wanna address that real quick, please do. Yeah, please. I have my phones on, too. Whatever you choose. You're losing all that weight, buddy. I want the folks to see you.
Yeah, well, thanks. To answer your question directly, Brian, the overwhelming majority of our water comes from North Wales, probably about ninety-three percent. The other amount comes from our wells. Our wells produce it at non-detect. North Wales now, with the lower detection levels, we do have a detection. So, it's not entirely accurate to say that it's at non-detect. So, I think the last test that we had done was six parts. The limit is seventy parts. So, but that is the best water we can get at this time.
And the seven percent is coming from our wells that have been fitted up with filtration systems.
Correct. And we run those at non-detect as soon as we get a detect in the first filter. We have a second filter after that. We change the media out so that it runs at non-detect.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, so, back to, back to subject, everyone. This is strictly an advertisement.
Yeah, there's authorization to advertise the ordinance.
And it's the first step in the process of the MUA assuming stormwater responsibilities for the township.
Correct.
Oh, we can, we could, I know you'll be here for public comment for that. Correct. All right, so, you wanna craft a motion?
Certainly. So, alls we're seeking this evening is authorization to advertise the ordinance as discussed for a adoption consideration on December twenty, 2018. You'll be authorizing our office to advertise that in accord with Second Class Township Code.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second.
Second.
Mr. and Ms. Frescatore, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, next one up. Consider authorization of advertisement of duty tow ordinance amendment. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, the board had previously authorized us to go out to bid for a single duty tow hauler. That bid is currently open right now. The bid closes on Thursday, when we'll have the bid opening. If the board chooses to go with a single hauler, it would have to amend the ordinance which dictates this. The ordinance which is proposed simply repeals the appropriate section. So, everything would be governed by the bid specs. This is necessary to line everything up for the December twentieth meeting. If at the December, well, at the December twentieth meeting, you'll have all information at that point. You'll know who the bidders are, you will know what they bid, and you'll be able to make an informed decision. At that point, you can either choose to go to a single hauler and award the bid, or you always reserve the option not to take any action and keep the current, keep the status quo in place. But in order to line that up, you at least have to advertise that ordinance and have it ready to go for the twentieth.
I know we had a lengthy discussion about this at the previous meeting, but if there's any further discussion, and as Greg said, this is simply advertisement, but now's the time. Any from the public? Sure, please, come up.
Ed Hoffman from County Line Road. Okay. And I just wanna make one point here, all right? I want you guys to see a face of somebody that's gonna lose a job because of this ordinance, okay? I'm one of those people that work for one of these duty toes, all right? I'm one of multiple people that will lose a job, all right? If you turn around and award this to a single contractor. I've had a chance to read over the contract, I've taken a look at it. I'd like to know where this all came from, okay? You have had nothing but great service from all the contractors that you have in this township. Why all of a sudden do you wanna take it away and award it to one company? And then have people struggle for worth in what we can do at our homes, for our kids, and everything else. So, I just wanna make it clear of what you guys are doing, not just to the companies, but to the people who are working for those companies. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further? Go ahead, Mr. Ryan Newsy, if you wanna craft a motion on that.
Certainly. We're seeking a motion to advertise the ordinance as presented for adoption consideration on December twenty in accord with the Second Class Township Code.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second? Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion? And I know we're gonna have more discussion about it at next month's meeting.
Right, right. I'll save my comments.
Any further from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, chair votes aye opposed?
Nay.
And motion carries for to what? For advertisement. Next up is item F, consider adoption of ordinance seven forty-eight, intermunicipal animal control ordinance. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've discussed this in the past. This is adoption of an ordinance allowing for the intermunicipal agreements with several municipalities for an arcane reason, which I'm unaware. We are required to do an ordinance for intermunicipal contracts without simply doing it by resolution. Amanda has worked tirelessly on this, and I believe all except one municipality has, we're good, okay, has signed the agreement. So, this is to continue the regional animal control that we are running through our operation. If you recall previously, the amounts that the townships participating were contributing to us, were, we're kind of out of whack. We wanted to make it a more equitable process, and we are now charging based on call volume rather than some percentage that was put together twenty years ago.
So, you're getting some more money out of them.
We are being made a hole throughout this process, I would say. And of course, it's a zero-sum game. Some municipalities are seeing an increase in their costs, some are seeing a decrease. But it's all based on call volume, and it updates itself every single year based on the new call volume.
Okay. All right. Is there, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? The ordinance number seven forty, seven forty-eight.
I'll make a motion. Which townships are we talking about?
Northampton.
Ivyland, Northampton, Upper Southampton, Warrington, and Warwick.
Mr. McPhillips, any motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, further discussion? Dan, do you have, anyone else have any, oh, anyone had? I think we've been over this a few times already. Is there any other discussion from the public on this? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Item G, I'm gonna give to Greg. We're gonna table this, but it's consider adoption of ordinance seven forty-nine, collections procedures for delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims. If you wanna touch on that, but we are gonna take out, table this tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, we are looking at engaging the law firm of Portnoy Law Associates to take over delinquent real estate tax collection, delinquent streetlight fee collection, and delinquent trash fee collection. Unfortunately, all the participants in the discussion couldn't be here this evening. So, what we're requesting is you continue this to the December twentieth meeting. That will be re-advertised accordingly.
Okay, so, we need to take a motion to table it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Is there, and you're gonna re-advertise?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to table?
Some.
Mr. Crowley, second. Mr. Monroe, any discussion?
So, the company, the company will be here.
Yeah, they'll be here on the twentieth, correct.
I need a cook out of lane. Kind of like what Mr. Hoffman was saying, where did this all come from? Because since like the beginning of time, Bucks County Tax Claim, who are residents of Bucks County, residents of Wormminster, I believe one of them is, have been collecting back taxes, and also the back municipal fees.
Right, so.
So, where did Portnoy come in?
Sure. It came in play when we discovered, a number of months ago, when Bucks County actually informed us that they're actually not legally entitled to collect fees. So, they can't collect delinquent fees. They can collect delinquent taxes. They had been collecting our delinquent fees. So, what they said is we were not going, they're not gonna do that for us anymore. So, we, of course, turned the collection over to the solicitor so we could properly lean. That was a laborious and costly process. So, we reached out to Portnoy, who specializes in this. So, that's how the discussions began.
So, you're possibly proposing that Bucks County Tax Claim still collect the taxes, but Portnoy Law Offices collect the other fees, the trash?
The proposal on the table is that they would do all of it. Certainly, it can be the fees stay with Portnoy and the taxes stay with Bucks County. That, that can happen, but the proposal.
And that could happen, because that's the reason.
That's what Northampton did for years.
And that's part of the reason that we're pushing this back to next month, because some concerns have been raised.
I, I, I work in the industry for almost twenty-eight years, and it has been my experience that they're not pleasant to work with. You, well, I can call Bucks County Tax Claim and get a verbal, and Portnoy, they won't even speak to you. The fees are exactly the same, so it's not like one would cost a resident more than the other. But, sometimes you'll have a real estate closing that might be the first of the month. Well, on the first of the month, it, the fees increase. So, I can contact Bucks County Tax Claim and say, I need a cert good for November and December through the fifth, and they'll provide that. Portnoy will not, and you can't even order it until the first of, the first of the month. So, what would happen is settlements would be delayed, people wouldn't give it to sell their houses on time and possibly buy another house. So, I don't know if there's some way they can work with us on this other, if they split the things, and it's the trash fee and whatever. Otherwise, you're gonna be escrowing money, people aren't gonna close on time.
And that's another reason we wanna bring them here. You know, we've had a conversation with them, but we would want, they're, they're gonna come to a public meeting.
Right. Especially if it's an FHA loan, because then you're paying a whole other month's interest. It can get onerous on your, on your township residents. So, that might be something you wanna discuss.
We didn't cover with them, that I would like to hear. That's something that we, we thought we covered everything, but this is something that we didn't.
They'll be here at the next meeting, and it'll be a good conversation to have.
And some concerns were raised. That's why we pushed this back. We thought, wait a minute, let's, let's slow walk. The fees, we have to do something about, because the county's.
Well, it's the same, it doesn't matter who you order from, it's the same amount.
Right, but the fees the county has, they won't collect them.
Oh, I know. And, I mean, I, I'm trying to think of, Bucknem was the tax collector in Northampton. You had to order it, but it wasn't, it was a law office, but it wasn't Portnoy. But then, Portnoy might not have even been in business yet doing it, so. Right, thank you.
So, but they'll be here on the twentieth. So, this, this is just to table it until then. But, I, we are, take notes of what she was asking, because I'd like to get an answer to your questions on that. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to table this. Is there any other comment on it? I see none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, we'll table that, and we'll see them in December. Okay, next up is first round of public comment. Residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to a five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir, please.
You're talking about.
I need your name and address, please, sir.
Oh, James McBride, three two two Centennial Road. Talking about Centennial Road and all, well, it might be cleared up down the bottom. But, years ago, when you started talking about building those new townhouses up there on the old football field across from Centennial Station.
Right.
Right. There, there was discussion about the upper part. They got a variance from the nursing home that they, they could come in and clean that area out to.
Oh, keep going, because I'm, this is kinda directed to our engineer.
Clean that area out, because I had two feet in the back of my yard after this last storm. I got three sump pumps, pool sump pumps, trying to pump the water down, further down there.
To the basin, to where it's supposed to.
Yeah. All right. You had a, you stopped the meeting and had a little thing. I talked to some of the stoop, the guys with suits outside. They were, you know, getting the variances and all. And I was telling them about it. He says, yeah, 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 we're gonna come in, we're gonna clean out all of the downed trees and everything else. I, the, since, I've had this problem since they started building there. And the other people up the upper part of Centennial Road going up the hill, the backyards are flooding out. And you're talking about down the bottom.
Right. But, this is the first that I'm hearing that there's a problem up top. This is the first that.
The next heavy storm, I'd like some of you guys.
I'd like to send somebody out there tomorrow.
And see my backyard.
I'd like to send someone out there tomorrow to take a look.
Well, it's almost all pumped out now.
But, I mean, is it a direct result of the construction?
Well, it all seems to be, because, like I said, these guys with suits, I was talking to them out in the corridor before they started the construction there. And they said, oh, yeah, we got a variance, and we're gonna come in and clean all the downed trees out, pull all the stumps out, really clean it up nice. Get that creek, you know, to where the water's supposed to go in. Water don't go into the damn creek. As they say.
I think we need to send someone out here to take a look. I mean.
We've been out, I mean, and I don't have all the addresses memorized. I understand, because the last couple we went looked at, Public Works is out, I was out. I think Amanda came out once, and Greg was out once. We've been on a lot of different properties. This is the first I'm hearing directly related to new construction, so that's news to me.
I don't know if it's directly created, but it.
Well, every time, that's, that's been the issue, that I would go out, and it's not, because there's a floodplain through that area, that all those houses, that whole development was built in a floodplain. There's, there's, there's Spring House back there, there's the original, I mean, and I don't know where, where your house is versus the other ones, but, and I don't know if Public Works is out or not, but.
And then there's, there's open field.
So, you're, you're talking on the lower end by the.
It's all, I'm down, a couple of houses down from the firehouse.
Okay, I mean, I'm gonna recommend, you know, if this is the first that Public Works serves as well, they can look at it. Every time we've been out, it's either a spring, something related to the creek, and it hasn't been related to anything but new construction.
Well, if it is related to construction, we will hold their feet to the fire.
Yes, then I will get involved.
Or if it's something they were supposed to perform.
I'm just wondering, because they said they were gonna clean out all the downed trees, because they had.
Because if it was something, the task they were supposed to perform, we will certainly make them do it.
They had the variance of, of, right, a passage that they could go in and do that, because that property behind my house and all, that area, is owned by the nursing home.
Right, majestic homes.
Yeah. And the creek, there's a creek there, but.
Oh, you're, I know, okay.
You know what I'm talking about, the creek there.
Yeah, that, they were not, that's, that was not part of the approval, the cleaning out of that whole area. They need permits for that. It's in the floodplain, it's, you're in a water course. That was never a part of the approval. That's come up before.
Guys in the suits in the corridor told me they were gonna clean it out and pull up all them trees and everything that's fallen.
Look, there's a lot of side deals that developers talk about with residents that I'm not aware of or, or this township staff, so.
This is the first I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's, it's come up before about cleaning it, the dead trees. Yeah, I, that's, I've seen it before about cleaning it, the dead trees, this is going back years, always clean out everything if floods. That's not part of the land development approval or any, any type of construction there. I, I do know that.
Can we double check? Can we send someone out?
We can take a look.
And take a, and Eric, and, and if it is something that they're responsible for, I, they need to be-
I think what he's saying is they were, part of their approval was that they were gonna clean it out. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, they were gonna pull up all the dead stumps, trees, everything, you know, kinda, I, when I first moved in there thirty years ago, I used to go behind my property there that, and I would, I would cut the grass.
And I'm not gonna deny there's, there's, there's some issues.
Because the deers go back there and all too, and, you know, who the hell knows what else is lurking in the weeds and all back there, if you know what. Cause we got, do have some foxes back there.
Right, and you're, 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 uh, upstream of the basin, right? You're talk, you're up on-
Yeah, I'm up by the Firehouse.
Yeah, that was never part of any type of approval. I've heard some of the neighbors in the lower end say the same thing. We, we've, we had plenty of trips down to Mr. Trotter and others, but-
Yeah, because there was, the thing, the discussion was too, about fixing that one house-
Who's telling you that?
Was like gonna get pushed off its foundation with the floodwaters.
Alright, well, you can have staff look at, or Public Works look at it.
I, I, yeah, I think, we'll definitely take a look.
There's no, there's no, that's not part of that development, it's not.
No, yeah.
And if it's, it's not part of that development, then what? It's, it's in a floodplain.
Still something to look at. I mean, it's a common, it's, it comes up quite a bit about ma, the stream maintenance and cleanup.
And whose responsibility is that?
Every ti, no.
Without open it, it can't work.
Well, like I said, it's a nursing home property back there, so-
I was just gonna say, it's the property owners.
Oh, okay.
But I think one-
So we need to go take a look. If it is the nursing home's property, we need to get ahold of them and say, "Hey, you gotta go out back and clean the property."
It's gonna be, it's gonna be one hell of a job, because I got-
Let's take a look at it and report.
I got three big pine trees that went, blew over and back on the, on the other side of my fence. Thank God they didn't come the other way. I still got my fence up.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have Eric go out, take a look, and, um, can you leave your contact information with Amanda, cause someone will get back to you?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Oh, by the way, uh, I don't know about the Water Authority and all, but, eh, I don't know where they're getting the water, but that's fine, but I, you know, I'm still alive. I spent twenty years at Willow Grove. I, I don't know, but I-
Fee, fee boss didn't kill you, did it?
I spent twenty years there.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Pat Boyle, four oh nine Grand Avenue. Um, Tall Oaks, thank you, they did put the McAdam down. And there's gullies on either side of it, and then there's this plastic fence at the end blocking it off from the public.
Correct.
So, there is, there is McAdam. We're making progress, it only took two years. But, um, can we open up the sidewalk to the public?
Correct.
Someone's whisper in my ear is still not ready, cause I'll have to check into it, but she's more aware of it than I am. Um, it's not ready-
There's, there's this orange plasticy-
Yeah, construction, yeah, yeah.
Fence there that stops it, like, at the, at the corner, and then they're digging beside it along, along the length of it.
Usually I'd say I'd have to check in with my construction staff, but Amanda's whispering that the ramp's not done, so that's what's holding that up. So they need a ramp for safety. So, you're talking about the orange construction safety fence, so, until that's removed, it's not accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Next year, maybe?
I have no control over the construction. Actually, the board does. If they wanna shut the whole job down because they're not meeting their, uh, development agreement, they have so much timeframe to finish the project, but we usually give them a little bit of time. I know it's taken a while, but-
A little bit?
It's, it's their, it's, we have no control over how fast they, they do the construction.
Yeah, but they put trees in first, come on. They put in the trees and bushes instead of the sidewalk, and then instead of the sidewalk, they put in a trail.
Township has no control over which they do first.
Sequence.
It's actually, it's actually the County Conservation District that sets the schedule. I have little say in it. If there's an issue, then I get involved. Like when you brought up about the trail, we obviously nudge and push them along, but-
Yes.
Uh, the schedule was approved by the county and recorded that way. Obviously, we can make, if they work with us. If they don't wanna do it, unless they're violating the development agreement or the approved plans, I can't, you know. And we have been pushing them, cause it's been brought to my attention.
We did get excited when they paid.
Yes.
You know, so-
That took an active effort.
Around the fence when you're taking your walk?
Yeah, but you're out onto Newtown Road, and that's not safe and it's dark and, you know, it's, it's not good.
We'll find out from them, possibly when.
Yeah, we'll bring it up again.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Pat.
Sure, bud, please.
Now, can I speak about Mascara?
Sure, and a couple of their representatives are in the room, as a matter of fact. Couple of their representatives are in the room, as a matter of fact.
Now, Mascara, I have no problem with. I moved up here from a brotherly ci- city, brotherly love, to Hartsville, uh, nineteen sixty-two. Now nineteen sixty-two, Street Road was one-way, each-way. There were Giant and Shopright is, that was a big lot. Uh, Valley Road was like a farmland. Then they had York Road, two sixty-three, from Street Road to County Road completely tore up for a whole year, and the merchants were going nuts. But now I'll get back to Mascara. I had no problem with them. On, on my trash days are Monday and Thursday. Now, my bulk day is Thursday. Now, the thing is, I usually put it out Sunday night, Monday morning I call them up and tell them what I put out for bulk day. Usually they come along on Monday and pick it up, but there's no problem there. Now, I talk to the fellows, but they're always in a hurry, you know, but they're, they're timed, you know. That if you got a problem, then talk to the time study man that makes up these schedules, you know. So, like I said, I have no problem. The only problem I have with them is I like to get those trash cans or wheels with lids that don't blow in the street.
You have come to the right place, brother, cause that is on our agenda tonight.
Yeah. Make sure you get them, if you approve the contract. Like I said, the men are, they're nice, the drivers are nice. Like I said, I'll put a word in for them, okay? So, thank you.
Just as a note, I'm this man's son.
Okay, so, well, stick around. We're gonna take action on their, on their contract tonight, and there's a couple of options we have to review. And that's one of them, so.
The other trash cans just don't, if you go and buy a trash can, my trash cans are completely destroyed. So I'd like to see us get the bigger trash cans.
Actually, the trash cans, the ones you buy in the store, when a guy slams it down on the blacktop, naturally they're gonna break the wheels. I've always bought trash cans without wheels, because ninety-nine times out of a hundred, those wheels are gonna get broke, and it's not the guy's fault.
Okay, well, we, they're on tonight's agenda to discuss just that option, so, stick around. Yes, please.
Alright, I'm back up. Ed Hoffman, County Line Road, alright, um, well, first, let me speak on behalf of Mascara. Alright, I have called this company multiple times, alright, tons of times, alright, and, you know, their guys are very nice, very friendly, but I will tell you, they're very sloppy, okay? And I don't know if anybody's ever seen it, when they come, they pick up their trash, they dump the trash, throw the trash cans over, whatever's trash left over is letting on the grass, on the drives, on the highways, anywhere you look, okay? So, and I've called over and over and over again, alright, I didn't think it was something I had to bring to the township, but since everybody else is bringing stuff up to it, I'm gonna bring it up now, alright? So that's something that you need to look at when you're considering this contract, alright? So, now onto my second problem. Last month, I came up here and I discussed Shenandoah Woods, okay? And this board, and I don't wanna use the term lied, okay, and I, I, it's a harsh term, but I feel like I've been duped, okay? Because this board turned around and told us, and told the entire community of Warminster on this venue here, that, um, you know, we spent money to have testing done and everything else. However, um, also said that we haven't taken action on this yet, because we could possibly still pull out of this, okay? Is what I was told at this meeting, okay? But now I find out, just recently, that apparently we couldn't pull out of it even if we wanted to, because the township signed a contract, okay?
We have an agreement of sale, which we talked about at the public meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have an agreement of sale. We executed that over a year ago.
That we couldn't, that we can't even pull out, we can't do anything about this, that, once we have.
No, I mean, I, there's, you can pull out, but it's not without consequence.
Correct.
So there's, there's consequential damages that would be attendant to pulling out, and that would, uh, you know, at a minimum, that would be the deposit that was put down. And that's a standard, you know, land purchase agreement.
And what was the deposit that we put down here? Because, I mean, we're talking about a four million dollar contract here that we are, that we have to have in Public Works work on, uh, what is it, retention basis, or whatever it is that we were just talking about? Is that correct? Alright, but now we're going to go into Shenandoah Woods possibly and spend how much money to do that? Where's the township getting all this money? Where's, where's township getting all this funds to do all this?
Well, to answer your first question, when they entered into that agreement of sale, which makes them an equitable owner, not a legal owner, and they can pull out, uh, but the damages there would be a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, and the Navy could come after us for, for additional damages, but that would be the minimum.
Right, okay. So, you're telling me we could still pull out of this?
Yes.
With, with a possible a hundred thousand dollar loss?
With, with, with certain damages. I'm not gonna give a specific dollar amount, yes.
I understand, that's fine. Okay, so, I'm sorry, what was it? Right, okay. So, um, you know, I, I still stand by my convictions about this, is that I think this is a project that we shouldn't even have to be involved in. The Navy pulled out of this, okay? It should be their responsibility to take care of that property, their responsibility to clean that property up, not our responsibility. We wanna beautify it later, okay? They give it to us, which we talked about at that last meeting also, when I was here, okay? That's fine, okay? We wanna beautify it, we wanna make it for our property, we wanna have it for open space, that's fine. But it should not come down to the township's residents to have to pay for that project at all.
I think you got five people up here at minimum.
I know that, okay? And, and I'm just making that known, because, like I said, I found out other things just not too long ago, and that's why I'm back up here again talking about this, okay? So, you know, I, I hope that you do take that very closely.
No imminent close date on that, because that property is now, which you can touch on, tied up in litigation.
Okay.
And the litigation, we're, we're-
We're a party to, they're, they're essentially suing the Navy, and, and they've tied in other entities, including the township, in the caption.
Okay, I understand.
So that's not going anywhere anytime soon.
Anytime soon.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I agree with Mr. Hoffman, Dennis Cook from Otto Lane. Um, but the original negotiations were in the context of, of our solicitor trying to negotiate a, a price for that property, but in the context of making it private development. When you change it with the property coming to a community, that's all off the table. So you might have signed an agreement to sa- of sale, and there might be a hundred thousand dollar penalty to that, but I guarantee you, if we have to pay that, that's when our community and the Board of Supervisors is gonna write a letter, I hope they would. And I would hope every member of our community would write, start, "This is what Mr. Toomey's for, this is what Mr. Casey is for, this is what Mr. Green Street is, Ms. Schroeder, Mr. Fitzpatrick. They will give us, get our money back." If you write a million dollar check for that, for a property that, from a community standpoint, when you were negotiating, it was zero, because it's ours, and it's been ours for twenty-one years. And if they made you write a check for a million dollars, I would ask the Board of Supervisors to talk to the chief, to talk to the, the department heads, and we're gonna submit a bill to them for watching that for twenty-one years, okay? Because we're not paying that money. And we're not paying that reclamation money, because Mr. Schuster's gonna work very hard to find grants for that. And every year, he's gonna tell us how many grants he applies for, and I don't care if he gets rejected or not, but he's gonna tell, tell us every year what he's done to try to get more grants in for the park, okay? Um, so, I mean, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I mean, I, I really think the community really needs to bring our other representatives in on this. I know when they first, Mr. Um, Mr. Savona once told you, you know, "We saved," you know, the, the, I think the Navy wanted twenty-eight million dollars for that property. Well, the bar, uh, the Base Realignment Commission really needed to represent the tax, federal taxpayer at that point, or the national interest, and, because they thought it was gonna go to developers, so they have to come up with some amount of money. But it really, from a developer's standpoint, and from a community's standpoint, it was always zero. So when I read the memorandum that was done by the Budget Committee, I kinda got a little upset, because in there, they're setting a price for that property of seven million dollars. And I got, make sure we don't put a number down on any kind of township document. That number for that property is zero. You know, that twenty, that twenty-eight million dollar savings, or twenty-seven million dollar savings was illusory. That was just to justify legal fees, when we should've just told the guy to put the brakes on his negotiating and get involved with that negotiation and say, "What the hell's going on?" But, um, I just, I, I really feel that we're, in the end, we're, we're gonna get that property, we're gonna get it for nothing, and we should get it just like any other landowner would be held accountable. Hand it over, and it has to be toxic-free, and it has to be cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah, please, Neil.
I, I forget what month, Anita Cook, Otto Lane, I'm with him. Um, I forget what month it was, but we had this huge meeting and we had to actually have it over at the school, do you remember, at the high school? And, and this was part of what we talked about, the Shenandoah Woods. If, if you owned a home, Mr. McGee, and you were gonna sell it, wouldn't you have to have the land cleaned, wouldn't? Or, or, say you owned a home and it was in disrepair and your neighbors complained, I mean, I can't even have an unregistered vehicle at my home in Warminster Township, on my own property. There are, are, are things put in place to make that landowner responsible for how that land is kept, to be a good neighbor. And so, why we just don't say to the Navy, "If you feel you have to keep our hundred grand, that's okay, cause we're saving six million dollars. Clean up your own land. Clean it up." I remember you saying once, sir, that you were afraid of children playing on that land, that you couldn't sleep at night thinking about that. And I agree with you, so make the Navy clean it up. Be a good neighbor. We've been a good neighbor to them my whole life, I'm, you know, my whole life it was a neighbor.
Now, now that you've mentioned what I would do, you're comparing apples to oranges. Uh, number one, the sale price is a million dollars, not seven.
Well, well-
The only other option we have, if we decide as a board to say, "Okay, we're bail and keep our money," is that will go out to public auction. And the Navy has told us, correct?
Right, okay, and what's wrong with that?
We're willing to take that chance of that property going out to public auction, because that property has been deemed suitable for transfer, by them and by our independent people. So there's nothing to stop someone from buying that.
Okay, well then why did we borrow seven million dollars? Didn't we sign a seven million dollar note?
Yeah, we'll, we'll cover that.
It was, it was for multiple purposes. One was the purchase of Shenandoah Woods, along with any remediation or reclamation that has to occur. But another big part of that was short-term financing for Warminster Community Park. As we do the build out there, um, some of the grants, a good portion of the grants are reimbursable, so we didn't have the capability to lay out all that money. We had to put in place some short-term financing. So that's the seven million drawdown loan.
Well, what part of that seven million was budgeted for Shenandoah Woods with the reclamation and the purchase amount?
I don't think there was ever an actual budget determined for one way or the other.
Because we don't have to take the whole loan, that's just the top shelf if we need. The money that's going to Warminster Community Park is reimbursed by state grants, so we have to put the money up front. As the works perform, we're reimbursed.
I get you, but then where did you come up with seven million? If you didn't know, I'm gonna need, like, when I, you know, get paid at the end of the week, I go, "All right, this much is for food, this much is for mortgage, this much is for insurance." I know, I have a vague idea of what I'm gonna have to budget every week to have enough at the end of the month. So you didn't have a ballpark figure of reclamation?
I just don't know it off the top of my head. I, I'm sure I could find those and get it to you.
And if, if they put it out to bid, and, and is that the worst thing that could happen? We'd actually get tax revenue, for crying out loud. I mean, I know there's more police efforts that needed and more-
It depends on, on what happens.
Right.
You know, it is, I believe, Zoned R two, but if someone were to come in and claim a pre-existing non-conforming use, and were to use the struc, use the structures that are already in place, you could have a very high-density development there.
But, um, don't those structures have like asbestos and, and lead-based paint and all that kinda stuff? I mean, you guys have the toughest U and O in the, in the county, Warminster does.
And we probably have the report on file. We had L and I go through there three years ago.
Yeah, and it was not in great shape. And so I don't, I mean, I don't think they could use their structures, and don't they have to dig up what, is it, however many stru- I don't even know how many structures are there, does anybody have an idea? So there's ninety-nine oil tanks, a hundred and ninety-nine oil tanks that have to get dug up. What's the-
I don't know, I don't think so.
No?
I-
They were natural gas? How come, okay. So, a hundred and ninety-nine houses that have to get turned.
And that's been a few years since that was performed.
But, well, cause when you got that report, didn't it give you a ballpark of what it was gonna cost us to clean all that up?
It wasn't that kind of a report.
The report was, are these units habitable? If this goes out to open market, can someone, and at that time, yeah.
Well-
They're, they're all sprinkled, they all have GFIs, they're all-
You think after they've been, how long have they been empty?
Four years.
No, longer than four years.
Much longer than that. The answer to all your questions is, we simply don't know. It's, it's a risk, and it's a question if the community wants to take that risk. We don't, it, it could be, if it goes to public auction, could it be developing conformance with R two? It could be, you know? Could someone come in, make a claim, we wind up in litigation and lose and have a high-density development there?
Or win.
It, it, we could win, we could lose. It's just a matter of which risk you wanna take.
How do you feel about it, as the attorney? I mean, as, when you're filling in, but you know what I mean? Not, no pressure, no pressure.
No pressure at all, yeah, yeah.
But you know, that we might lose.
I'm the wizard of oz, I'm very flattered. I'm just the attorney, so my opinion don't matter.
Well, like you says, you know, we might lose, I have confidence in you.
I would, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna refrain from giving my personal opinion, because, uh, this is my first meeting, I want to be invited back. But, but the beauty of this is, the, the sensitivity of the issue is certainly appreciated by the board, and we do have time on this. There is, there is time on this, and all these things are being reviewed and analyzed, options are being weighed, and discussions are being had. So it's not something that you're gonna wake up tomorrow and you're gonna find out that something's been done.
But it's been months since we asked the last time.
And this is, and when you're dealing, when you have a dance partner, that's the federal governor, it's a slow dance, yeah, yeah, as, as you're aware.
Ah, but, okay, but months ago- Ah, but, okay, but months ago, we said, we brought up all these options. Were any of them acted upon? Did you say, "Hey, we might want to back out"? Now we're enjoined in a lawsuit, who filed the lawsuit?
The ALDI, the nonprofit filed suit against the Navy, and they filed what's called a Liz Pendance Act.
Yeah, I know what it is. All right, so because another nonprofit, a nonprofit wants a piece of the pie, how about we give them the hundred grand and get out and say to Navy, "Okay, you can get released, we'll give them, you can give them our deposit money, we don't have the debt, we don't have the responsibility, ALDI's happy, and the Navy can put it to bid and..."
Yeah, without revealing too much, I'm very confident and very happy to report to you, all that's being considered.
Okay.
It's all being considered, our office has been authorized to deal with this, we understand this is a white-hot issue, and we're sensitive to that.
Are you here next month?
I hope, I got to say.
No, I didn't know how long he was going to be away.
We'll find out. I might be landscaping next month, I hope I gave him the right answer.
Do you do windows?
Yes, whether or not I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Knight, McGuire Lane. I'm concerned about that. I understood that the Navy or the township was going to put a halfway house there. Is that true?
Where, Shenandoah Woods?
Yeah.
I think he's referring to ALDI.
ALDI. You know. I don't want a halfway house there, you know, there are criminals and drug addicts and everything. Are you going to propose that?
There's no proposal to do that.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Hayes, 850 Lingo Drive. As Chairman of the Budget Committee, I want to say, for the record, in our memo, nowhere do we, the $7 million price tag, we are not putting a price tag on that land. This was an option that could be explored, but not recommended. So the Budget Committee did not say that land is worth $7 million, okay? It's all right here, in the memo. So I want that to be on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Cook, it doesn't matter, you put a number on it.
Do I need to stand up again?
No, this is, this, we're going to stop soon.
All right, well, that number is the drawdown loan that still can be used for the community park development, and, you know, that's part of the drawdown loan. So that $7 million is the drawdown loan, okay? So that was an option to be explored, not recommended, and nowhere did anyone on the board, Bob? No one was saying that property's worth $7 million, because that's just part of the drawdown loan. You understand that, we understood it, and that's what was in the memo.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Can I suggest to Ms. Scarrow what they should do, do for their employees? I see it on the street. These people in the summer are dying of thirst.
I know, I always run out and give them water when I see them.
I do, too.
Actually, I do give them water. They ask me sometimes, or if I see the truck coming down the street, I take three bottles of water out to them, because they're damn thirsty. And when it's 100 degrees out, that heat, there's a side door on that truck. My idea, maybe they won't use it, is to put a cooler in there, to put some cold water for the people. And the other thing is, I see a lot of these trash companies, the people have uniforms, and they have the logo on their uniforms, on their coats, hats, everything. Now, suppose one employee goes into a store, naturally, he's going to buy a pack of cancer smokes. I call them cancer smokes, by the way. Now, the guy's trying to think what dumpster company to call.
Good advertising.
Then here's the Mascara man walking in with a logo on his shirt or coat, with the phone number big, so they can see it. I believe they will get some more business. I see this all the time. I've been in a lot of townships, and the most of the men are wearing uniforms. I know Hatburger does, and they give them a lot, they give them safety shoes, because these big trash cans now, if one of them falls on a guy's foot, that's a lawsuit. So they should think about getting the men safety shoes, and putting uniforms, put their name on their shirt or coat. So I talk to them once in a while for about a second, that's all. They're always on the move, on calendar time study, man. And as far as trash cans, being in the street, all these big ones are going to be there, because the guys don't have time to put them on the curb, because the driver's in a hurry, he's got to meet his schedule. That's why they sit in the street. They don't have time to put them on the curb. People don't think that, you know? So that's my idea, to get the uniforms and the water. And I don't mind giving them water, what's the coolest man, Nick Olbada? So Mascara, whoever they are in here, get the men water, because they need it, especially when it's 100 degrees out.
You guys hear that?
Right? The street is damn hot, I'll tell you.
Okay. All right, is there any other public comment? Please say no. Okay, well, we'll have a second public comment anyway, if anyone has any. Next up on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster, let me give that one to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item A is approval of the minutes from your October 18, 2018 meeting. Item B is document disposal resolution 2018-43. This is mostly old parks and records. Item C is approving closure of two bank accounts that are no longer needed or necessary. One was for Safety Town, one is a general fund money market. Item D is approval waiver of fees for the John Fitch Steamboat Museum, associated with building permits, zoning permits, and certificate of occupancy approval for proposed building addition. This is by Craven Hall. The request here is to waive those fees. This is not related to their trip to the zoning hearing board, the proposal is not to waive those fees. Item E is consider payment number three final for the 2018 curb ramp installation contract to associate paving contractors, the amount of $22,853.43 contingent upon receipt of original copies of the revised closeout documentation as recommended by the engineer. Item F is consider release of all maintenance security for Street Road Industrial Park, Lot 23, as recommended by the engineer. The 18-month period has elapsed. Item G, Hart School redevelopment, release number 18 from escrow, in the amount of $26,313 as recommended by the engineer. Item H, 915 Roberts Road, escrow release of $70.46, that's for a pool. Item I, Nina Way, Lot 23, escrow release, in the amount of $4,586.05 from the Legal and Engineering escrow. And item J, Pierce Aluminum escrow release, the amount of $3,982.18 from Legal and Engineering escrow.
Are there any questions on the consent agenda before we take any action here? Okay, I'm going to call for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion on the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, abstaining from A, because I was not at the last meeting.
Make note of that in minutes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, a call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and Miss Frescatores an aye with the omission of one item. Okay, excellent. All right, next up, finance report, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have everything in your packet for the transfers and bills list. I would ask for a motion to approve the October transfers. The supplemental bill list dated October 30, 2018, in the amount of $936,941.23, and the bill list dated November 15, 2018, in the amount of $1,122,525.42.
Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, second. Miss Frescatore, any discussion on the bill list? Any from the public? Seeing none, a call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is the October financial statement. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are still tracking, pretty much, to budget, nothing major to report. I do want to point out that as of the close of October, the general fund has spent approximately $513,000 more than we have taken in revenue. This is to be expected at the end of the year when you budget a deficit. So as I've been saying for the number of months, the deficit has occurred, and we anticipate a significant deficit to close out the year, in line with the budget that was approved.
So we ran out of cash, we're just operating out of our savings, yeah?
That is-
Until the end of the year, from the end of October.
That's essentially correct. We do still have revenues coming in, there's still earned income tax coming in. Pretty much at this point, almost all real estate taxes have come in. I imagine there'll be a little trickle towards, you know, we get to the close of the year. But the lion's share of the revenue has come, I guess.
What's in the general fund?
See, what do you mean?
What's in the general fund?
Our fund balance?
Right.
The actual-
I'm sorry, yes, the fund balance.
Fund balance, that's what I thought you were asking.
Well, fund balance is usually done at a period at a time, but I can look at the report, if you give me one second. I'm not sure if it's in this report. I can get that to you, though, I don't know the exact number.
Ballpark, do you have a ballpark?
No, not off the top of my head, no. John, would you by any chance know what that is?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, but we can get you that number.
Okay.
And you want it as of the end of October?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So by the looks of it, from what you're seeing, we are going to see this actual deficit that was projected last year, or somewhere close.
Correct.
Anything, anyone have anything else for Greg on the financial statement? Okay, let's move on then. Unfinished business. Item A, consider award of waste hauling and recycling bid, 2018-9. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank everyone that participated. We had four bids that were received. We did do an extensive bid process. As you know, the current contract expires at the end of the year. You had awarded previously a five-year bid, followed by a two-year extension. These things are obviously very competitive, they can also be litigious, so it's very important that it's done with all the i's dotted and t's crossed. I want to thank Frank Bartle and the Solicitor's Office for all the time, especially Eric Werff, for all the time that they put in to making sure that this was a legal and defensible bid. Of the bids that were received, there were a number of options that were bid out. Fortunately for us, in terms of an analysis standpoint, Mascaro came in as a low bid on every single option. So what that means is, you don't have to have a discussion about which firm to award it to. They were the low bidder on every single option. We examined their bid, we did not find any deficiencies that would cause us to recommend that it be disqualified for any reason. So I'm going to pause right there and just see if the board is okay moving forward, or if you have any questions about the bid, or have any reason to want to reject the Mascaro bid.
No.
Okay, so then if Mascaro's bid is the acceptable one, it comes to you to pick which options you want. And I sent an email out to you a number of weeks ago, and I'll go over the three options for you to decide on. And I'm looking at this sheet, which is before all of you, that lays out everything, the amounts, as well as the fees that would have to be, the associated fees that would have to be charged. The first decision you would have to make is, who owns the recycling? At the moment, we have a separate contract with us owning the recycling. When this was put in place, the market was such that we were receiving money for the recycling. The market has changed significantly. Now you have to pay to get rid of the recycling. So the options are, either leave the recycling with us, in which case, we would have to find an alternate method, or an alternate contract to dispose of that, which is also contemplated in the bid process, or we would go ahead and have Mascaro own the recycling. My recommendation is to have Mascaro own the recycling. It takes the risk off of us and puts it onto them. It also gives us cost certainty throughout the length of the contract. We don't have to worry about any fluctuations worldwide. So we would not be penalized if the market, if it costs more to dispose of it. On the flip side, we also wouldn't get any of the benefit if the market were flip around and we were able to, you know, receive revenue for the recycling. This would take the risk off us entirely and allow for that stability.
Can I ask you a question, Greg?
Yes.
So I know right now, recycling's not, you know, make anything from it. People used to collect the cans and all that other kind of stuff. Do you see that changing any time down the road, as far as, I mean-
That's an excellent question. I don't think so.
What's your prediction?
Oh, I wish you didn't ask that. You know, this was explained to me, and it really has to do with China, and, you know, what they're going through over there, and, you know, I would almost defer to the gentleman from Mascaro, if they want to explain the market a little bit better, because I am certainly no expert.
I'm just curious.
I don't think the market's going to change, you know, in the length of this contract. It certainly could, but to have cost certainty and not have to worry about the fluctuations is something that I'm really interested in. But I'm not an expert on the world markets of recycling.
And at the height, when we were getting paid for that, it wasn't a lot of money.
It wasn't, right.
Really wasn't a lot of money. At the height of, you know, during the past contract, when we were getting money for that, it wasn't, it wasn't anything to speak of.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do you want me to keep going, or do you want to discuss that one first?
I don't know, I was just, I just-
I'm just asking if you want me to keep going to the other two.
Do you need a board consensus on that option, or how do you want to work this? Because you're the one reviewing this.
Well, you're going to have to award a bid based on the three questions.
Right.
So we're going to need to know what the board wants to-
So should we do a consensus on this option while we're speaking about it?
I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Personally, I'm in favor of leaving it with Mascaro, we know it's, we know what to-
Same here.
Exactly. I agree.
So if that's a consensus, I'll move on to the second question, and that is pickups, once or twice a week?
Twice.
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 I will note, and I do recommend twice, because that's obviously what the community is used to. There is a significant difference in cost between once a week and twice a week, but this is the standard the community is used to, and I think it'd probably be in the best interest to keep it that way.
And it's still affordable, too, for folks, and people do like having the two-state pickup.
I moved up here from the city, I'm like, "What are they doing here again?" On Friday? Sorry, Kenny?
The third and last question is whether to have toters or not have toters. So right now, we do have an ordinance in place, which says people must put their trash and recycling in receptacles, in cans. We don't enforce it as much as we should, mostly because we feel guilty, we don't actually provide the toters to them. We do notice, however, there's lots of trash blowing around, lots of people just put out bags rather than put out the cans. So if you chose the option with the carts, that would have everyone with the toters, both for recycling and for trash. If damaged, they would be replaced, we wouldn't have to worry about that, and would help keep the streets and the environment clean. It wouldn't mean if you can't fit all your trash in one can, can you put a bag next to it? Of course you can, you could still do that. But if you're not going to be allowed to just put bags out without any cans at all. So this is an effort to keep the trash from blowing around, keep bags off the street where animals get into them and tear them up. The approximate extra cost is about $27 per year for the toters.
For Mascaro to provide them.
Yes.
And what if they get broken?
I believe the way the specification wrote, if it's Mascaro's fault, they would replace it. If it's the residents' fault, it's on them.
I do have a question, so, because I know that I'm going to be getting calls on this.
We are.
Yeah, it's, so, some people, and I'm sure a lot of people through the township have just put a pretty penny up on their existing trash cans, because there are some, you know, that are, you know, eighty, ninety, hundred-dollar trash cans. What do we say to those people? I mean, they can't use them anymore, or they have to dispose of them?
No, they can still use them, but they're still going to get brand-new ones.
Okay.
You know, and just to be clear, this is not an opt-in or opt-out system. You know, it's one size fits all.
Right.
The other thing is, and I'd have to defer to Mascaro about this, I see no reason why they couldn't accept non-standard cans like they're doing right now, but if ever some automation were brought in, you might have some issues. But at the moment, my understanding is Mascaro doesn't use that automation, so using different cans wouldn't be a problem.
That was my question. What came up when I was, when we were talking to some folks recently was, does Mascaro use the automated can pickup system? Like, you'd see, like, I drive through Amler every day to work, and I see a lot of them where they have, you know, one guy's running the truck, basically picking it up. In our township, I think that'd be very difficult because of the way a lot of these streets have been configured over the years, how, you know, tiny our streets can be at some points.
Yeah, and we had some discussions on this, and one of the bidders also was asking questions about being able to use it, because one of the things that came up is if they use the automation, some of them just use a one-person truck.
Right, that's what I was saying.
You know, and one of the things required in our specifications were spotters if they have to back up. They were, the bidders were wondering if they could be excused from that if they had cameras and such, and we didn't feel that that was appropriate, because there was no standard put in place. So, the answer is, at the moment, they don't use automation. I don't think there's anything in the bid that would preclude them from doing it. However, there's still stuff in the bid that requires them to use spotters, so they would have to have multiple people on a truck.
Right, and then the other question, which I think you touched on slightly, was people I spoke to were concerned that, okay, so we get the toter, and it's a big toter. You can fit a lot of trash in there.
They're all picking it up.
Right.
That's the first question I asked.
The second question is, okay, am I limited to just what fits in that toter now?
No.
Because they love having their six-bag limit, and we know that a lot of times, you know, they'll, we put it out, they pick it up.
Yeah.
So, that six-bag, is there a new limit?
No, it's still six.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about the recycling, for, like, a container, recycling container?
Well, it's a sixty-four gallon, sixty-four gallons, correct, for the recycling? Yes, sixty-four.
So, we're talking about two toters?
Yeah, oh, two toters, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, how rampant is it with the trash around the township? I mean, I've driven around, I've seen it.
I've seen.
How, like, do you have a huge percentage of folks that are putting just the bags out, and animals getting in there, and trash strewn all over?
You know, I have driven around the township, and I've seen places that look immaculate, and I've run around on some days, and it just almost looks like a war zone with all the trash and everything that's blown around. So, it varies from time to time. I will say, from an environmental standpoint, it certainly is better to have it in receptacles, because if it goes in the ground, eventually, it's going to find its way into, you know, most like, you know, a drain somewhere, an inlet, and it'd cause problems there. But I don't have a percentage and, you know, have any idea of.
It's just a problem that needs to be addressed.
It's a problem. I notice sometimes, you know, some other days, it's not as bad.
Okay. I just want to make a comment. I've lived in other places, I've lived in Warmminster for a really long time, but I've seen other towns that have other carriers, and, you know, some people may complain about the trash cans being thrown on the street, whatever. I think they do a phenomenal job. We get two-days pickup, they handle the recycling, they take out any piece of furniture you put out. You don't have to call and pay like you do in other townships. I think they do a phenomenal job, and you're going to have the trash cans strewn around because of the time factor. But I just want to say that I'm very happy with the job that they do. That's it.
Where are you with the toters?
I have my own trash cans, but I understand the, I'm looking at the big picture here. So, if that's a problem, then, okay, I'll go ahead with the toters.
Well, it's board consensus.
Yeah, I don't want to overstate it. I don't want to make it sound like I'm sitting here saying, you have to get the toters, this is an astronomical problem. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I think from a community standpoint, it looks better.
Right.
It's more environmentally sound, but I, to me, this is not on my top ten list of critical things for Warmminster to work on.
Sam Augustine is here from Mascaro. If you'd like to comment on that, please.
Yeah, I want to comment, because there's been a lot of things raised by the residents, not a lot, but some raised by the residents. There's no doubt in my mind that adding toters to this township would greatly improve the level of service. I think we're doing a very good job here now. I think there are some issues that residents brought up about the time factor and such, but I think toters would greatly improve it. And also, the fact of the matter is, is that having, we actually, when you say automated, there's such a thing called semi-automated and totally automated. And with toters, you can use a semi-automated system where you have dumpers on the back, so that if some of the toters are heavier, that they can hook it to the system on the back and dump it that way. And in some cases, the helpers can dump the toters. Our toters that we're going to use are sixty-four gallon. The sixty-four gallon toters are also better, because there are a percentage of senior citizens now in every township, a good percentage of senior citizens, and the larger toters, the ninety-six gallon toters, are some cases, they're a convenience for a hauler, because the hauler wants to use just a driver, but those larger toters are pretty difficult to maneuver and for senior citizens. And also, sometimes kids are bringing them out, bringing them out for their parents. So, the toters that's ninety-six gallons can be very large, and they can be a problem. Also, with the sixty-five gallon toters, an excellent example is we have Lower Providence Township, and Lower Providence Township is somewhat similar to Warmminster. There are about 7,000 units. They have worked with the sixty-four gallon toters now for probably ten years. There's not a lot of destruction in the toters. It's probably no more than one percent, two percent max a year of the destruction of the toters. They last a long time. The fact of the matter is, is sixty-four gallons really only handles, you know, two or three bags. If people want to put out, up the six bags, they can use their present containers to put out the extra, and they also can use the present containers, because Warmminster is very environmental with their yard waste. They're very environmental with the leaves and the grass, and they can use their existing containers for their, you know, for their yard waste, to put that out on the specific yard waste day. I'm not sure if it's Wednesday here, or how it works. So, I think the toters would be a great addition for your township. I would heavily recommend them, and once you get them, trust me, you will use them for the long term.
They're pretty well-made, Sam.
Oh, they're excellent. They're excellent. They're made for at least ten years' use, not five, ten, for ten years' use.
Now, I've seen them in other townships, and I just think it looks a lot more uniform, too.
It looks, and especially with the recycling, because now, you're going to have a recycling toter, you're going to increase your recycling fifty percent. You will, I'm telling, you will increase your recycling fifty percent. It happened in White Marsh, it's happened in Lower Providence, because it's very easy to throw in the single-stream recycling, and so, you'll increase your recycling and improve the system.
Are they different colors or something?
There's a different color lid.
Oh, okay.
The recycling lid will be blue, and the trash toter will be red with a red lid, the recycling with a blue lid.
Thank you.
So, everybody will know.
Okay. All right. Sam, before you sit down, water on the trucks? Get some water on the trucks for the fellows?
It's interesting, it's interesting. It's interesting you say that. Every, just so, and I understand about the uniforms, our guys, our guys wear colored shirts, Mascaro shirts, they're all given Mascaro shirts, as well as the driver. But the interesting thing is, I want you to know that our employees, we have 900 employees, and that's not just office, 900 employees, office employees, including the people in the back of the truck. Everybody gets the same benefits, okay? The same health benefits, et cetera, that the office employees get. That's the way our company is. Also, every holiday, okay, this is a fact, every holiday, you know, this time of the season, like, for Thanksgiving, for Christmas, you get a turkey, Christmas, you get a ham, et cetera. But our guys have gotten, over the years, probably, I don't know how many jugs, okay, that they can take to put in the trucks, for water, et cetera. So, I really appreciate, and, you know, these guys work hard.
They do, they do, man.
And every type, not only hard on a sunny day, but hard on rainy days, horrible days. And so, I appreciate the township people giving them water, helping them out, because our, we have a lot of caring employees, and I hate to hear about throwing containers, et cetera, but we hear about the caring employees.
I don't like giving them water.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. We really appreciate that. Yeah, we really appreciate.
I see these guys sweating, and they're dying of thirst.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I still say, put a core in your truck, and put some cold water in there with these plastic ice packs.
Yeah, well, they have, so, so, I don't, you know.
You got the sun beating down on you, a plump up burning your shoes.
I know.
Also, you want to get them safety shoes, because if those they fall on their guys' feet, I mean, Hackler gives them everything.
I'm going to nominate him for shop steward, right now.
I used to work in Hackler, I worked there, and I know about how much trash it can take, because I was only, they'd gone away on my burning, right? And I was only allowed two trash cans.
All right, we're getting off subject here, but Sammy.
Did they have wheels, Sam, trash cans?
Yes. Both containers have wheels. They're very sturdy, too, and they're very easy to handle. Sixty-four gallon, they are really easy to handle.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I have the one at my house, it's a bigger one, I live in Limerick Township, and, I mean, you struggle with the toy thing, even, you know, and it's, you still struggle with this ninety-six gallon to get it, to maneuver it and such. So, the sixty-four gallon, you don't. It's a nice-sized container.
In the unfortunate event that you have a resident whose trash can is destroyed, and I know if your hauler's idiot and you pay for it, and you have a resident who says that, well, no, I didn't do it, who determines who destroys the trash can? Who determines who pays for the new trash can?
You know, generally, we, you can't have, you can't have, like, we'll replace every one, because these things, these things cost, we have extras, okay?
Okay.
But these things, but generally, if somebody has a broken can, I mean, people are not breaking in themselves, but, you know, when somebody says, when somebody, remember, we're putting out, there's going to be eighty-two-hundred-and-fifty, sixteen-thousand-four-hundred cans. We're going to go out and carefully make sure that every resident gets two of these, okay? Can't have people saying, I never got one, I didn't, do you understand? Once the flow goes out there, a couple of weeks' time, you know, we're taking calls, et cetera, but, you know, we, you know, one year in, we can't have residents, because what we do in other townships, so you know this, is when a house is sold, okay, the realtors have to make sure that those two containers stay with that house. They don't just travel somewhere.
What happens if the trash can's stolen? I know that sounds like a bizarre thing, but those are nice trash cans, and somebody could be driving by who lives somewhere else.
Who has a broken one, says, I'm going to clip that one right there.
Well, actually, actually, yeah.
So, that's a good, that's a fair question.
It is a good question, but, again, we've had Lower Providence for years, and we haven't had a problem. We really haven't had a problem. If somebody.
You know this is Warmminster, right?
What's that?
You know this is Warmminster, right?
Well, let me tell you, it's really not much different than Lower Providence. It really isn't. It's, you know.
I mean, I think, I think seventy, maybe eighty percent of the people are going to be happy. I mean, I've seen, you know, the different trash cans and recycling, especially with recycling containers. I mean, people are using the old milk cart, you know, things. I think the majority of people would be happy about it. But I, again, my, just to reiterate, I just don't want to tell anybody that, you know, like, listen, okay, you recycle a lot, and you want to still use your other container with the other one. I just don't want to tell them they have to get rid of them.
No, here's the thing, in your contract, your contract stipulates that extra trash can be put outside the container. That's not the way with these other contracts with this automatic. You can put extra trash outside the container in your contract. If you want to put out extra recycling, or you put another recycling, as long as this, as long as she's signified recycling, we're going to pick it up.
Okay.
It's not like we're saying we're only going to pick up that toter. We're picking, we're picking up what's at the curb.
Mascaro picks up.
Yeah.
Well, and on that note, then, I would, if we do that, then I would also like to continue to offer the recycling. I don't want to get rid of those.
The labels.
Right, right.
Sam, what if this is a disaster and it's not working out? Like, do we have an option to opt out of this? I guess we wouldn't, would we?
No, I mean, if you're going to award a bid, you're, they're going to go ahead and buy them.
Yeah.
So, there's no, if you make a decision, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's final, there's really no way out.
I have.
For the term.
Yes.
For the term of the contract, right.
Truly, Mr. Chairman, I have never seen a problem with these toters. I have never seen. We put toters for recycling down in the Hamptons, they love them. They love them.
That's where I see them in Upper South.
What's the cost, again?
What's that?
What's the cost?
Well, the cost in your contract is.
It works out to be about additional $27 per year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's reasonable. Thanks for the explanation, because I was on the line there, you know, on the fence, so clarified all the questions I had. Thank you.
And since you guys are also here, I'll say this as much, too. I mean, I've gone to the doors quite a lot over the course of the last year, and besides the water, one of the top things that I talk to people about is you guys.
Right.
And I would say ninety percent, I think I started, what did I say, Greg initially? Seventy percent?
Something like that.
I think I'm up to about ninety percent of the people I spoke to are very happy with your service.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. We have an excellent supervisor that works in this township, that deals with, you know, your front desk on any calls, any problems, and I know, our guys work hard and they work fast, but we have supervisors that follows up and makes sure, you know, the township is being serviced properly. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. So, where are we with the toters? Is everyone? I'm in favor of doing this, I am. I think it would be a nice addition to the township.
Ever now.
It's going to be a little learning curve. I mean, we're all going to get phone calls, we're going to get bombarded with calls, but in the long haul, I think we're doing the right thing here.
I think, I think if we could still put, if they, they're not restricted on the amount of trash they're putting out, I think, I mean, look at it, $27 for two toters over the course of a year, talking nine bucks each.
Right.
You're talking what? I can't do math now anymore.
Per month?
Yeah, less than.
Two dollars in change, yeah.
Two dollars in change. So, a buck a piece. I mean, overall, when you look at the fact that we really haven't had an increase in the garbage fee in what, seven years?
It's been steady for seven years, yes.
So, I mean, no fee is adopted lightly, but I think, I think for that small cost, I think it's worth it.
You'll like them.
Yeah.
For twenty, twenty years.
There you go. Kind of weighed in. Keeping the senior discount and?
I'll get to the rates in just a second, but yes.
Okay, so, we're in, let's review.
Alright, so, it seems that the board consensus is to go with the option with Mascaro owning the recycling, picking up trash twice a week, and providing the two totters, correct?
Yes.
And under this new contract, everyone's days will remain the same.
Uh, yeah, there's no change.
Good, okay.
I like my days.
Me, too.
Alright, um, so let's talk, uh, the finances for a second. Uh, and just so everyone, including the public's aware, these are not tax dollars, this is all fees. There's a separate fund, the sanitation fund, so all fees flow into that fund, and then flow out of it to pay Mascaro and any other expenses related, uh, to trash and recycling. This is not intermingled with the general fund at all, so these funds are completely separate. For reference, the current fee right now is three hundred fifty-three dollars, uh, per year, the senior fee being two hundred ninety-eight dollars per year. The option that you selected, um, having Mascaro own the recycling, twice, uh, pickup, uh, two pickups a week with the carts, would be four hundred and sixty-one dollars, uh, per year. And four hundred, and if you keep, kept the same senior discount of fifty-five dollars, um, that would be four hundred six dollars a year, uh, for seniors. If you look at the analysis that's before you, the block on top is just the straight bid numbers. The block, uh, below that is building in, there are some additional costs, uh, and revenues that the township gets from, from some grants, uh, that is built into the total cost associated with the contract. We also built in there a slight contingency, uh, just in case something is unpredictable. So, those would be the numbers to go ahead and, uh, support the selection that, uh, you just made. And one other note, I am basing this, and I believe I said this in the email I sent out to you, on a seven-year contract. And what this does is the cut, the fee, uh, to Mascaro goes up. But what I'm doing is average, so that this fee. Throughout the seven-year deal. Now, you still have an option to do five years and then rebid it. Do the two-year option, but I built it based on seven. Reason I did that, um, and this appears to be what was done previously, is for. You won't have. On the last cycle. That is what was done the last cycle.
Folks, they, they won't have an increase if we do the same.
Have a surplus in the beginning. But you'll keep the feast.
Thank you.
So.
Up if the board is ready. Own the recycling. Authorize. Cue the. That was.
Does anyone?
Most likely, since there's less aluminum, that's gonna start going up. Because the soda company said they're gonna switch the plants, because most of the people say that they like it, they see how much soda's left in their can. I just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
John, please. What's that, Ed? It's back on? Okay. Let us know if it goes out again, please. Sorry, John.
Yeah, good evening. John Capozzi from Penrose Lane. I just popped over from home. I was watching it on TV. The audio is fine, on Comcast, anyway. Uh, anyway, um, quick observation and a comment on Mascaro. First of all, I wanna comment, I mean, commend Mascaro, because I think they've been doing a, a great job for our township. Level of service, I think, is unprecedented. Um, I've been involved in other townships and with their big containers, and some of the problems that would be associated with those big containers. I like to keep my trash cans in the garage, because it keeps down on the smell. And I bag my trash and put bagged trash in my trash cans. So, when you go to containers, even the smaller ones, do they have to go in the street? And I don't know if I can put them in my garage, but do they go in the street or on the curb side if you have curbs and sidewalk? Because now you have problems with the snow. I think we have an ordinance now that nothing is supposed to go in the street, although a lot of people don't observe that currently.
I could think without having someone here to, to tell me the specific ordinance, that they would go where you keep your trash now. Because it's not an automated system.
Because it's on wheels, they'd have to drop it off the curb and then roll it to the back of their machine, uh, back of their truck. So, we really shouldn't have them in the street, because come, come, you know, snow removal, things are gonna be in the street, or you have to amend the ordinance to say that no, no trash should go out during, uh, snow removal time, just like we, we don't have the cars in the street. And if they do go in the street, do these cans have reflectors on them?
Perhaps you could cover that one, Greg. Sorry, I know you were out of the room.
We can put that on the website, all these, all these, uh.
Where the trash cans will still go where they go now. They're not gonna be required to be in the street for.
Same location.
Okay, so, they shouldn't go in the street?
No.
Because I know people that. Well, it's good by everything, right. Right, but some people don't do that, and some people even put bulk items in the street, and I've witnessed, you know, cars smashing into things that shouldn't be in the street. You know, and thank goodness, nobody got hurt. And I have seen, just like, um, we talked, I heard you talk about it earlier, where the birds, the crows, they pick at the bags incessantly. Uh, just like the shore communities, they have ordinances, you know, for cause of the seagulls, that they have to be uncovered.
I'm in North Wildwood, they have an ordinance for everything.
To have to be, uh, in covered containers.
Sanity.
Exactly. And I'm not exactly sure where I saw it in the township, but it was just the other day, and I felt really bad for the guy. People put, you know, trash and garbage in their cans, and the poor guy picked up the can, took the lid off, stuff sprued out all over the place, because it was overthrown, it was, it was food. You know, and he's trying to pick up some of the stuff, and they shouldn't have to do that, and they should, you know, people should be a little more conscientious of, you know, other people handling their trash.
Sam, we should form a trash committee, you'd be a perfect chairman.
You know, I feel sorry for these guys, these guys work hard.
No, definitely.
And I always give them water, too, so, thank you.
Tip them up at Christmas time, too. They're allowed to take tips at Christmas time, right, Sammy?
Yeah.
No booze in the water.
No booze, right, right. We're not, only in the city, only in the city. Okay, is there any other, is there any other, any other comment? There's a motion in a second. Does the board have any further? You guys have anything else, any other comment? Sure, please, Jerry. Uh, Jerry, please, please come to the podium. I'm always terrified when I see you roll in.
Jerry Shidrew, uh, four sixty-two Gibson Avenue. Do you have to use the totters? Uh, if someone wants to put their trash out, the senior citizen or whomever can't maneuver that? Will, will your trash get picked up if you use bags or whatever?
So, you, you're, you're gonna be provided the totters regardless.
Right.
If you choose not to use them and wanna use your own cans, that is fine. What's unacceptable is not using any cans at all.
And we already have an ordinance.
Bags aren't clear.
We already have an ordinance for that now, that we don't.
And just, just to be clear, this is, again, not an opt-in, so even if you refuse to use the totters, you're still paying for it, you know, you're not getting any, any additional discount.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Jerry. Okay, once again, there's a motion in a second. Please, sir. Um, please, please come to the podium.
These guys.
Please, please, please come to the podium.
These guys on the truck, they do try. If they make a mess, they clean it up the best they can, because they're always in a hurry. They're timed, you know, and they only can send, spend so much time in each house and each street and all that. They're always on the move. I'll, I'll tell Mascaro the same thing. Your people work hard.
And, and as soon as, as soon as you're done, they're going to hire them.
Okay, take your vote.
Okay. While we have the budget coming up, I'm willing to take our time with this. Well, there is a motion in a second. If, if no one else has any comment, I'd like to, like to call for a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye while motion carries. Thank you, thank you to the public for your input. Thank you to people from Mascaro. Thank you, and we, we're glad to have you guys back in Warminster for another run. How long have you been here, by the way? I know you had told me before.
Nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety-three.
I was a young man.
You still are, Sammy. I thought you told me you were twenty-nine.
Alright, good night.
Good night, good night. Okay. Alright, next up is item B. Consider awarding golf cars, golf course bar renovation project, which, Mr. Schuster?
We are going to reject that such bid, correct? That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you're aware, the board authorized us to go out to bid for work being done at the golf course. Uh, the first bid that went out received zero bids. Uh, it was rebid, the, this time we received one bid. Uh, the base bid, or the option one pricing is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which is significantly higher than we budgeted, and we believe, uh, um, is well more than the project is worth. Our recommendation is to reject all bids, and we are working internally to come up with a, um, a resolution on this.
Okay, is there a motion to reject bid? Mr. McPhillips, second. Mr. Monroe, any discussion? I just couldn't believe that we didn't get any bidders at all, and then we only got one, but things must be really busy out there in the construction world.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Mr. Schuster, Mr. Inozian, fellow board members, I have to ask for a brief recess before we do the budget. I really have to go to the boys' room. I don't wanna miss this one. So I'm gonna ask for a brief recess, we'll take a quick breather. Thank you.
Amanda. Did you put together this bid tabulation sheet?
So that's gonna go out to bid then?
That's gonna go read?
Is everyone ready? Okay, thank, okay Ed. Whenever you're ready pal. Okay, we're gonna resume tonight's meeting. The next item on our agenda is the authorization to advertise the 2019 Board of Supervisors' proposed budget. I'm gonna ask Mr. Schuster to give a little overview here so we know precisely what we're voting on and then we'll open it up to some discussion if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, there's a prescribed process in the Second Class Township Code governing the adoption of the budget for the next fiscal year. It requires the board to put forth a proposed budget, advertise same and allow it for, be out there for a public inspection for 20 days, after which you can go ahead and adopt the final budget. Once you advertise a budget, there are certain restrictions on what you can and can't do. Specifically, increasing line items or general sections becomes problematic. You'd have to adhere to certain guidelines about the most you can increase things by. No such restriction on decreases. So just want to let you know that there are some restrictions once you go ahead and advertise a proposed budget. The consensus of the board and what I was directed to do was to take the budget which I presented to you, the Township Manager Proposed Budget, and make some further changes based on new information that was received. The changes that I made from the Township Manager Proposed Budget are as follows. Number one, we did receive our insurance renewals. They were less than budgeted in my proposed budget. So we have updated a number of line items to take that into account. Because of that reduction in cost, I did make a decision to propose restoring one of the three positions that have been slated for elimination, specifically the police night clerk. The proposed budget that I put forward had a proposed general fund mil rate of 18.69. That has been reduced down to 18.38 with the total mil rate of 24.59. Additionally, the golf budget has been significantly updated to take into account the new model that we're operating under. No bottom, real bottom line changes. As you know, that's not a tax fund. That's all based on fees received for people using the golf course. But that was updated through that process. So what is before you and what's been emailed out to you is a budget that reflects all of that. It would take the general fund, sorry, the total mil rate to 24.59. As you're aware, we did transfer over some of the cost for the workers' comp, the volunteer firefighters, from the general fund to the fire fund. So part of that increase also takes into account a .23 mil increase in the fire fund.
To pay for?
To pay for the workers' comp.
Correct.
It is before you tonight for action. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You didn't cover the transfer from capital fund.
You mean the operating reserve?
Right.
So I'll cover, yeah sure. That's not really something for the 2019 budget. But what I have proposed and what I would bring to you in the December meeting is we currently have over $500,000 sitting in the operating reserve fund. It is doing no good there. It's not getting, we're not getting any value out of it. My proposal is to transfer that this year, this year into the police pension fund. That would put us approximately at market value level with the, from the actuarial valuation. However, if that recommendation is contingent upon the board producing a balanced budget which has the tax increase to cover the existing deficit. If the board were not to put forth a tax increase and have a, and start burning through fund balance, I would not recommend using that operating reserve in 2018.
So basically what we're talking about here is raising the millage to the general fund. And coupled with that is to basically put an injection into a pension fund that is severely underfunded.
Correct. We've had a history of underfunding the pension, really in two ways. The first way is we've been on the smoothing method, which pushes off any actuarial losses to future years. Those have obviously been building up. And the second is we have an 8% assumed rate of return. The markets over the last decade plus have not seen that historically. We're very fortunate that 2017 was a great year where I think we got close to 17% return. 2018 has not repeated that and is nowhere near the 8% mark based on the information we have right now.
And the importance of this injection is because the actuarial study will be done in 2019, which determines our MMO.
Correct.
Which has been exploding on us for five years now? Six years?
Correct. It's always a good time to put more money into the pension fund, especially if it's underfunded. However, if we want to have a positive impact on the MMO, it has to go in prior to that valuation. So it would have to be in December 31st or before this year.
Right. So that capital reserve money, that's what we're doing with that?
Operating reserve, yes.
Operating reserve.
I'm just saying that because there is a capital reserve fund. I don't want to, I don't want to get them confused. It's the operating reserve.
The millage increase going forward is basically to fund our essential services.
That is correct.
And failure to do so?
It depends on, well, there's, if the board adopts the budget with the expenditures that are listed in there, without adopting a tax increase, you'd be burning through fund balance. And we've already gone through that over a few meetings, whereas sometime, probably not in 2019, but also, but 2020, the township would be out of money.
So I thought it was a little alarming when you told me that we ran out of cash this year in October. And that trend cannot be allowed to continue.
Well, you don't want to be in a deficit spending situation. Obviously, if you've built up fund balance, you can withstand that for a short period of time. But once fund balance is gone, you have no other remedy.
Okay. So that's all I have for you. But I'd like to open it up for discussion before we take any action. And from the public, we've had a budget workshop. We have a budget committee who the chairman is here who's made recommendations to this board, which thank you. And we've had another meeting since to discuss it. But I'd like to discuss it some more. If there, if anyone would like to. Please John.
Good evening, John Capozzi, Penrose Lane. As far as the budget goes, we've had many increases in the school budget and they're pretty significant. And people take it, they don't really like it. But you know, the township budget is, to me, is equally important. And if it takes an increase to keep the township running, then it takes an increase. I mean, it's cost of living, things go up. You know, every so many years, you gotta pay for the sins of the fathers, you know, that was shortsighted in the past and that's just all there is to it. So I have no objection to having an increase, you know, to keep the township running, to keep personnel going, to fund the pension the way it's supposed to be because it's been underfunded. And that's my two cents.
Because in the end, we, the taxpayers, are responsible for this pension. It's a condition of our employees and a condition of their employment. And we're responsible to make such payments. How things got out of whack is a story for a whole other day. And we're at the here and now and we need to fund our employees' pensions, in my opinion. But we can discuss that some more. Is there any other? Please Jerry.
If you could, we're talking about up in the millage. But what is it now? What is it going to? What approximately would that equate to? Just so.
Go ahead Greg, you got that one.
Sure. It's an overall 7.52 mil increase. So we'd go from 17.07 to 24.59. That's total with the increase in fire and general fund combined.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here Jerry.
Could you give an approximation of what that will equate to per household, roughly?
I think we had a number on that.
Yes, I did. Let me see if I can find that in the presentation.
$17,000 per household, per month, I think.
So obviously that's gonna depend on your assessment.
Right.
Correct. You make no mistake about it, this is a big increase.
Oh, I, I, I get it.
Make no mistake about it.
Because our goal just went up. And now, I'm sorry.
So the information we have from the county is the average assessment is $25,553. A seven mil, I have broken it up by one mil increments. So it's going to be an approximate, little under $200 per year with that.
Okay, so about 200. And then we've got another $108 for the trash. And then the $4 million, I'm sorry, was it $4 million in the stormwater management that's gonna be over the next four years? That's gonna be an increase in our water and sewer bill because I'm sure, they're really nice people over there at the water department, but they can't do it for nothing. So you're talking probably a $700 increase per household?
I don't know what the authority would charge, but you know, I'm not arguing that.
$4 million over four years, that's a million dollars a year. That's not even, that's just...
But I realize that, I don't want to sidetrack here because we're in this discussion, but the authority, Tim will touch on this when he does his presentation. They can ask for extensions on the MS4 as well, from what I've been told by our professionals.
Okay, but we still have to pay for it.
Eventually, sure.
And then pay back for the Warminster Park, or I'm sorry, Shenandoah Woods. Because that's not in this, is it?
No.
No, that's not even part of this.
There's nothing in this for Shenandoah Woods, no.
Awesome. Okay, so it's about $600, $700 we're talking about per household, between all four of those things. Because I thought Shenandoah Woods was in and now it just popped into my head.
Well, the trash hauling, that was the lowest bid that we received.
Oh, I get you.
That is a pass-through fee. It's has, you have to pay.
My house in the Speedway, my trash hauling is more than my county and township taxes together.
But they were the lowest bid.
Oh, I get you.
It was sealed bid.
And it's, you know, we have trash, we have to throw it away. We don't have to buy Shenandoah Woods. You know, there we are. I'm gonna have a lot of explaining to do when I do have.
Any others? Any from the board? So I guess I'm gonna ask to craft a motion. Would you or Mr. Inozian would like to do that?
So I believe the appropriate motion would be to put forth and advertise a proposed budget as transmitted to the board on Friday, November 9th and discussed at this meeting, November 27th.
Correct. And so we would want a motion authorizing my office to advertise a legal notice setting forth the 20-day inspection period. This would hit on November 30th. It would provide 20 days and it would be set for your adoption consideration on December 20.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Crowley. Is there any further discussion from the board before we vote?
I mean, just to clarify, this is a legal requirement to advertise.
Correct.
This is not, you know, any, being for any part of the budget, being against any part of the budget. This is... Simply to advertise your proposed budget and then on the 20th, you're able to then do your adoption consideration.
But if we want to make changes, we need to do it.
Well, it depends on the changes you want to make. So let's just be crystal clear. Let me pull out the Second Class Township Code so we...
I guess my question is, are we doing this in reverse? We have Resolution 2018-44 as subcategory I under C and shouldn't we be actually doing it in the reverse?
Well, the solicitor needs a proposed budget to take forward to the court. So the proposed budget becomes that legal document. Yeah, I mean... So the quoting Section 3202 of the Second Class Township Code, upon any revision of the proposed budget, if the estimated revenues or expenses in the final budget are increased more than 10% in the aggregate or more than 25% in any major category over the proposed budget, it may not be legally adopted with those increases unless it is again advertised once. So obviously, you don't have enough time to advertise it again if you want to make changes on the 20th. However, you are certainly able to reduce expenditure and revenue line items at that point. There is one caveat that I think we have to work through a little bit, that if you wanted to decrease the tax increase and increase the appropriation from fund balance, that could be in violation of this. We'd have to talk through that a little bit more. But your options become more narrow on the 20th than they are right now. You can, you have latitude now, you have much less on the 20th.
Okay, so you're saying, so if the proposal to advertise the budget, specifically for the advertisement, those changes can be made? Because we don't know what the votes, I mean, let's just throw it out there. We don't know where the vote's gonna be on the potential tax raise or going before the court. So if that were, if it were to pass, then there's no question. If it were to fail, there's still time to make amendments or there is not?
Well, if you fail, there's no proposed budget. So the, this process doesn't kick in until you have a proposed budget. So you have to vote, the three of you have to vote yes on something.
Okay.
If not, tonight's by special meeting, like?
Well, if the board cannot make a decision tonight, we'd be off the timeline. The 20-day posting requirement, advertising requirement poses some challenges. Essentially, you'd have to have a special meeting, the first week of December, another special meeting the last week of December, to allow for that 20-day period. You could potentially cancel the December 20th meeting and do all your business in all those two other meetings. But you would have to rework the schedule.
Okay.
So we are limited, can't do increases, but you can do decreases, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, everybody got it? Any other discussion? There was a motion and a second?
And this is, so this is on the advertisement and I'm fine to proceed. I just don't want to, I don't want to pigeonhole anybody into having to be forced to make a legal decision with respect to the actual, you know, the proposal to go before the courts and things of that nature. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So what would happen if this motion were to pass? This budget would be advertised. The solicitor would take this budget and file an emergency petition with the court, emergency petition with the court and saying, "This is Warminster Township's proposed budget", and ask for the permission to exceed the 14 mil cap on the general fund. So that's what would happen if that motion were to pass. If on the 20th, the board were to reduce the tax increase, I'd defer to Bob on what the court would do at that point. I don't know if they give authorization up to the amount we're requesting.
Yes. So they'll set the ceiling, not the floor. And so to the extent that you want to go less than that, you're fine and we don't have to go back to court.
So right now, we're strictly voting on to advertise the budget, correct?
For the motion that's before you, it is to advertise the budget.
As proposed.
As, you know, to have a, this is the township's proposed budget.
Right.
It's not your final budget.
Okay.
And it opens up your 20-day review period, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'm gonna, I don't normally do this, but this is really important. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Frescatore?
I vote yes to advertise the budget.
Mr. Monroe?
I vote yes to advertise.
Okay. Mr. McPhillips?
I vote yes to advertise.
Okay, Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few things I want to go over and I'll go over these again on the 20th. But while we have a room full of people before I cast my vote, I've been up here for seven-plus years now and I want to go over a few things that I've seen since I've been here and a few actions that have been taken by this board to shrink this government. And every department head in this room has been affected by it. To cut the cost because I see out there, cut... the cost, because I see out there, cut costs, cut costs. We're at the end with cutting costs. In two thousand and nine, there were fifty-four sworn police officers in this township. There are now forty-three, chief, about to go to forty-two.
Forty, forty-four, about to go to forty-three.
About to go to forty-three. With six full-time civilian staff, nine part-time desk clerks, and seven crossing guards. There are now forty-three sworn officers, correct? Four full-time civilian staff and part-time desk clerks, and the crossing guard positions have all been eliminated.
There is no part-time.
There, and there is no part-time, so this is, part-time has been eliminated, you're correct, chief.
They're all full-time.
Public Works, two positions have been eliminated in the past two years. LNI, three administrative positions were outsourced in two thousand and sixteen. People lost their jobs, along with our inspectors. So, three years prior, Denise, correct, or?
Yeah, about.
Three or four years prior, that was outsourced. Park and Rec, we outsourced the entire YMCA, the recreation operation and programming to the YMCA. We no longer handle that. That was a reduction in staffing from a hundred and eighteen to six as a result. We have outsourced the entire golf operation of the golf course. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there were twenty-seven-plus employees there, seven years ago. Karen, you would probably know because you were running it then. We, we've outsourced the entire, the entire golf course operation to cut costs, which, because we had to do this. This is what we've done, to shrink the size of the government here. And, and I'm saying this because people need to understand why we're doing what we're doing here, why, why we're at the end here. And believe me, I haven't slept in a week over this. I can only imagine how our employees feel, because this is their pension we're talking about. Administration, one position was eliminated, which was a confidential administrative position, and we're eliminating another with this proposed budget, correct?
We're eliminating a receptionist position.
Correct, with this proposed budget. People say, why haven't you raised taxes? That's a question I frequently get. Up until two thousand and eighteen, we had a balanced budget and a very healthy fund balance, and it was due to the, the fees that we received from property transfer taxes from the school properties being sold, the construction, and all that that was going on. So, how do we, as a board, go to the public and say, hey, guys, what, guys, we want to raise your taxes, but we have a balanced budget and an extremely healthy fund balance. You guys be throwing tomatoes at us. You, you would. I mean, seriously. So, here we are now. I mean, I know, as a supervisor, for the past six years, every time we have adopted a budget, I've stopped the manager, and you're the third one that sat next to me, and said, this MMO, this is a bill we never had before. It went from three hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and ten, it's up to now?
Oh, well, over two million.
Over two million. We, we have to, we have to fund the pension, we have to pay for this, and we've, we've paid the minimum on the credit card long enough. We paid actual in two thousand and seventeen. By taking this action, we will pay actual in two thousand and eighteen. It's putting us on a firmer footing. Is it going to fix our problems? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We have bigger problems, but this, doing this, will stabilize the township budget, for now, for the next few years. It will. And, and hopefully, the injection of cash into the pension fund will, will stabilize the MMO, because as our, as our employees get older and start to retire now, the MMO's going to continue to grow, because we're, our pension fund is underfunded. I mean, it, and so, that's where, where I am with this. I am definitely a yes for this, and I will be a yes again on December twentieth for this, and I will go over this all again on the twentieth. But this is what this board and this administration has done to cut costs on behalf of our residents. I mean, our departments are down to the bare bones. I think our police department's understaffed, I do. Our, our park and rec, the fellows that clean up our five hundred acres of parkland, there's three guys dump all the trash and do all that. Them guys can't, they're just putting fires out. We're, this township's understaffed. It is. And to, to vote no on this and just continue down the road of ripping through our savings and taking us down the road to bankruptcy is, I didn't get elected to do that. I'm not looking for a job, I'm not running for another public office. My job is to pay my bills here in Warminster, and that's what you all elected me to do, and that's what I'm going to do. So, I'm a yes. That's all I have to say about it. We can discuss it more in December. I'm, I'm in the phone book. Anybody wants to give me a call or wants to meet with any of us, we're all available, including the township manager. So, I'm a yes on that. So, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up?
The resolution.
Thank you, John. Okay, yeah, we need to do the resolution. Resolution to authorization of solicitor petition to court for a mil increase to exceed the fourteen mil cap. Did I word that correctly, Mr. Iñoz? Okay, is there a motion?
It's removed.
It's removed. Mr. Crowley, second. Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion on that? I think we discussed it a little bit already. For those of you that don't know, if this budget is adopted, we will exceed our millage as prescribed by the state of PA, correct?
Second-class township.
Second-class township code. So, we need to petition the court to exceed that.
Yes.
One thing you need, the public needs to know, is we get a five mil bump on that, and that's it.
Correct. The, the second-class township code puts a limit of fourteen mils. The court can grant an additional five mils, up to nineteen mils. After that, the only remedy would be a township referendum.
Right. So, that's another thing that we need to bear in mind going forward. So, there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Ms. Frescatore's a nay?
Nay.
Mr. Monroe's a nay, chairs and aye. Motion carries three-two. Awesome. Okay, thank you. Next up is new business professionals report. Township manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, in case there are any questions. The bid that you awarded today to Mascaro, one of the things I'll be doing over the next few weeks is putting together a lot of talking points and putting together communications to make sure we continually communicate to the residents. Every time you make a change like this, especially in a township the size of Warminster, there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of angst. I hope we can all be helpful in that process and communicate as much as possible what's happening, why it's happening. I will put together a list of common questions or talking points, so that everyone has it, so we'll keep getting the word out. I do anticipate the first couple of months will be a little rocky, but any kind of transition like this typically is. Some good news, we are out of DEP hell with Warminster Community Park, so we have gotten approvals there, and we're moving forward. So, look for some more information at the beginning of, of the year, and an update on that project, so we're looking to-
So, you're basically putting the bid specs together now? We're getting, moving forward with bids for the project?
Yeah, the bid, the bid specs are being developed, yes.
Right. And as, as we draw into that loan for that, and as things get completed, we will be reimbursed by the grants?
For some, for some, most of the costs, yes.
For most of the cost?
Yes, not all of it, but most, yes.
Most of it. Okay. I mean, I think we have to eat some engineering costs.
Yeah, there are limitations on how much you can pay for engineering, other soft costs.
Right. But this, this is an undertaking that's been in discussion for several years, I mean.
Next, just want to make a, a quick remark about smoke detectors. We have, either through inspections or fires, have seen a number of residences which do not employ, or do not use smoke detectors. You would think it's a very basic thing, but I just want to take a second to urge everyone to make sure you have a smoke detector in your home, not just in one room, but in multiple rooms. Also, keep in mind that smoke detectors do have a lifespan. Most of them expire after about ten years. So, if that smoke detector you bought that was, you know, perfectly white, is now a nice beige, you might want to pull it off the ceiling and take a look at it and see what the expiration date is, of course, change your batteries twice a year. And finally-
That beep, that beeping noise is not your phone.
Correct. And finally, if you are buying new smoke detectors, I strongly urge you to look at the ones that are interconnected. They don't have to be hardwired, they can be wireless, but these smoke detectors will talk to each other, and if there's a fire in the kitchen, you're in the bedroom, the bedroom smoke detector will say, fire in the kitchen. You know, it's, it's something that, that we have seen. I know that Joe can back me up on this, that we've just seen people that not using smoke detectors, and it's baffling, and it's really starting to cause some harm. So, I urge everyone to look at your smoke detectors. And lastly, I just want to say a quick remark. Earlier this, this morning, there was a shooting at the Paradise Township Municipal Building, where a municipal employee, Mr. Mike Trippis, was killed. I just want to, Mr. Trippis was a former employee of mine when I was in Pocono Township. I just want to extend my thoughts and prayers to him and his family.
That's a tough one. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
No.
Okay, solicitors report. Mr. Iñoz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We presented our report on November ninth. The board has that in their packets, so that speaks for itself. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to field them. Just want to commend your attention to section two. In the last month or so, we've moved quite a bit of paper. We have six land development or land development waiver projects underway, properly drafted, and I thank Amanda and the, and the township engineer's office in assisting us in that effort. So, we're moving in that, in that direction. That's a good direction. So, just, if there's no further questions, that's all I have this evening.
It was good to have you here tonight. We hope to see more of you.
Thank you.
I'll tell Frank I said that.
Appreciate it.
We'll give him a thumbs up.
Okay. Anyone have anything for Mr. Iñoz?
Great job tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job, Bob. Thank you.
Easy meeting. Easy for you to say.
Engineers report, Mr. Schuster, or Mr. Schuster, Mr. Kenner.
Oh, man, I got replaced.
You don't pay me engineer money.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our November report. I'll highlight two items that you should be seeing at your December twentieth meeting. One, received plenary final approval tonight over in the Warminster Authority Building, was three fifty Ivy Lane Road. That's a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse, behind actually the Pierce Aluminum Project, that was a few years ago. So, that'll be ready for the, your meeting on the twentieth. And the other project you'll see is six twenty-five Mary Street. That is a five thousand square foot light manufacturing use. They anticipate to go to the December eleventh Planning Commission meeting. If they receive approval, you'll see that on the twentieth. Those are only two projects that need approval that are in the pipeline. Like Bob mentioned, there's a bunch of projects that just got done, and we have, I think the big one is the twelve seventy Mern's Row. We're getting ready to hopefully have the escrow numbers and the plans finalized here, and the development agreement's ready to go. So, I'm not sure if they're gonna still try to start construction or not. I was asked about that before, but we have several other projects as well. The Patagon self-storage, they're trying to get moving. So, we have a lot, lot in the pipeline, but you will only see those two projects in December.
We're counting on them fees.
And that's all I have. You have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Take, take and check.
Take and check.
We're apparently waiting on corporate to send the trainers up. Now, that is where we're at. The last time I talked to him.
I have no control over that either.
I asked, I asked.
It's holiday time, they're losing a lot of money.
Yes, yes, he is.
I want to thank Mr. Kenner for following up on some of the issues that the residents raised too. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
I know there's something before planning tonight. Is there something going on with the old client property? I've got some calls today. I got a whole bunch of calls about it.
Their planning module was on the Planning Commission tonight for approval. So, they are, they got their approvals last year, but they just needed their planning module signed off on by the Planning Commission tonight. So, that's all they voted on, was just signing them.
Did that start them up?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, jeez.
The radar is on.
Usually, that's not the same time, but-
But the plan's approved. It's an approved.
Yeah, yeah.
What? Okay. Anything else for Mr. Kenner? Okay, next up, township manager announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless there's any objection, I'll just cancel the December sixth meeting.
Objection.
The, Mr. Kenner has already gone over the land development you'll expect to see on the twentieth. Also expect to see the duty tow bid and ordinance on your agenda as you approve the advertising of that ordinance amendment this evening. Portnoy was continued till that meeting as well, so Portnoy will be here. Mr. Hagee will be here giving an update on the municipal authority and also talking about stormwater, and also adoption of the two thousand and nineteen budget as you proposed this evening.
Okay. Okay, next thing up is the second round of public comment. Sure, John.
This is comment on anything.
Good evening again, John Capozzi, Penrose Lane. I'll be brief. I wasn't here for the first round of public comment, but when you were talking about the stormwater transfer, I couldn't help but think about the meeting that we did have over at William Tennant Auditorium, and that had to do with the selling of the stormwater-
Evaluating this.
Evaluating it. So, hopefully, that is completely off the books, and if there's any way to put that in a, not so much a referendum, as I mentioned before, but to change their charter so that they just can't be sold, you know, at, at a whim, especially if somebody were to come in-
I don't think we can do that.
And, you know, take over that, and God knows what, what they would do now with having the stormwater in their pocket.
That, that's, that's not a legal possibility.
No.
No.
Okay, well, anyway, it was worth a shot.
Thank you, John.
Sorry. Yeah, it is very difficult to, in a municipal setting, to take an action which cannot be undone by future boards.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Want to go to supervisors' comment. Ms. Frescatore?
I was not present at the last meeting because I had a death in the family. My brother passed away, and I have received so many nice, warm wishes from folks, cards, and, and phone calls, and just kind words. I just want to thank all of you. The Board of Supervisors sent a beautiful flower arrangement. I want to thank them for, for their kind words also, and all their sympathy, and, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
That's it, Mr. Kenner.
Well, you know, you, you get what you give, Kathy. When both of my parents died, I heard from you on both occasions, so.
Thanks, Mark.
So, Mr. Monroe?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. McPhillips?
Okay.
Mr. Crowley?
Just real quick, I wasn't going to have much comment, but there was something that somebody was talking to me about the other day, and I noticed. And it just seemed to be a little bit of a epidemic there for a couple of weeks last month. But, when everybody's out there driving, please be aware of the school buses, and, and when they're stopped, and know the laws about the school buses. I've known a couple of the drivers in town, and you always hear stories about people blowing through the stop signs when the, when the stops are up and everything. And, you know, every morning when I leave, I, I, you know, I drive through the Speedway, and just kids everywhere, and kids will be kids, and I just ask everybody to keep them in mind, and especially here, as it, you know, in the morning sometimes, it's still pretty dark out. So, please be careful out there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Now, the only thing I have is I want to thank the staff for all the work on this budget. I know there's been a ton of back and forth, and a ton, and to bring to get it this far along, I just want to say thank you. I know it's been a lot. With that, I'm just going to ask for a motion with Jerry.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, meeting with Jerry. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.